Planning Board for Monday, May 19th, 2025 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Di Piero.
Here.
Councilwoman Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Stansiel.
Here.
Chairman Dingsmore.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Ms. Stein.
Very good. If we could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a whole bunch of resolutions. It seems that Gordon, by not being able to go off on the trip, was able to manage a productive meeting.
Yeah, we, it lasted 15 minutes.
But you were in charge. All right, we've got three resolutions. And we have a list here. Do I have a motion on Brixmore, 381 Route 46, Block 411? Statement for basis and preliminary investigation of AINR.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Do I have a second?
Second, Math.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich? Oh, he's not here. Di Piero?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Napolitano?
He's not here either.
That's right, he is not. Okay.
All right, next is application number 25-502. Metam, 700 Percipony Road, Block 739. Minor site plan with C variance for modification of a condition of previous approval.
I do, I did receive a few revisions to the draft resolution just to correct the proper name of the applicant and to revise the resolution to state that it's a, they were just seeking to modify the prior conditions, not to change any site plan approval.
Okay, well, I was even here for this one. Do I have a motion to approve? For those listed on the resolution approved list?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good. Mr. Shaw. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Hernandez?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stansiel?
Yes.
Dingsmore?
Yes. All right, and final, application number 22-529. Woodmont Senior Living LLC, 79 Interpace Parkway, Block 136.01, Lot 1, preliminary and final major site plan with C variance and major soil moving permit for the extension of time.
Yeah, that was just an extension.
Yep, all right. Do I have a, is somebody willing to move the extension?
I'll, I'll move the extension.
Thank you again, Ms. Hernandez. Do I have a second?
Second, Math.
Second, Mealy.
You can have it, Dominic.
Yep, Dominic gets it. All right. Nora, would you call the roll?
Di Piero?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Dingsmore?
Yes. All right, that gets us through the preliminaries. Now we get to the real agenda. But before I get to the agenda, I'm supposed to ask if there's anybody here who wishes to come before the board on anything that's not on our agenda tonight. Hearing and seeing none, we move on to case, application number 24:504 FC Real Estate Group LLC, 44 North Beverwick Road, Block 531, Lot 11, Zone B5, preliminary and final major site plan with C variance for construction of a two, of two second-story apartment units over a restaurant.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. Members of the board, good evening, and members of the public and board professionals, good evening as well. My name is John Miller. I'm also councillor and chairman of Inglisino and Taylor. We are representing the applicant owner of this evening, FC Real Estate Group. The applicant is seeking preliminary and major final site plan approval regarding property designated as Lot 11 and Block 431. The address of the property is 44. Oh, can't hear me? Is that better? Can you hear me? The property is located in the township's B5 local business zone. This project before you this evening consists of the construction of a second story over an existing commercial building which contains currently a restaurant use. That restaurant use will continue on the first floor of the building. The restaurant use is a permitted use in the zone. We are proposing two apartment units on the second floor of the building. The apartment units are a conditional use, and our application satisfies all of those conditions of the conditional use requirement for, for the apartments. As we all know, Lake Hiawatha is a very close-knit community. It's actually a very unique community, I think, within any municipality. Great neighborhoods, neighbors are very close, and everything is, there's all things within walking distance. The school's right off of North Beverwick Road. It's a, and it's an, it's an active street, North Beverwick Road. It's almost like a Main Street, USA for Lake Hiawatha. There are a lot of thriving businesses, and it's been that way for a while. There are a lot of great ethnic restaurants that are, that are part of the neighborhood. And we feel this evening that our, our proposal, actually, it actually works well with the existing neighborhood. And we have a, we have a picture up of a rendering of the building. We feel the building is of an attractive design, and it would be aesthetically pleasing addition to North Beverwick Road and to the Lake Hiawatha neighborhood. So in that spirit, we're, we're pleased to propose this mixed-use building to the board. That building will be approximately 3,258 square feet in floor area. The building height is a compliant 31.7 feet. Will include four parking spaces on, on site. We are also proposing, in addition to a reconfiguration of the parking lot, we are also proposing improvements to the driveway, sidewalk, lighting, and landscaping as well. We have requested submission waivers for a traffic study, and we will testify as to the reasons for that. We have also requested a submission waiver for an environmental assessment study because the application results in slight decrease of 20.5% to the exact impervious coverage. We do request, we press variances for one existing condition and also variances for maximum impervious coverage, front yard setback, minimum driveway setback, minimum driveway width, minimum driveway aisle width. Most of those have to do with how the configuration currently of the parking lot in the back of the, in the back of the building currently. Parking height and also maximum fence height, we are proposing, we are proposing a recycling and, and area to store, to store the waste containers, and we're proposing a six-foot high fence to surround that, or where the high fence is permitted. We received review letters from, from the board planner, the engineering, sewer, county planning board, which has granted an exemption for the application, also from the environmental engineer and the water department, and the fire district as well, and fire subcode official and tax assessor. We're grateful to receive all those reports, and we'll certainly have our witnesses go through those reports during the evening this evening. We'll have two witnesses this evening. First is Mark Walker of Dykstra Walker, who will be offered as the project civil engineer. Our second witness will be Tony Garrett of Willow Garrett Group. He will actually have two functions this evening, both as the project architect and also as the planner for this evening. And the principal of the applicant, Ali Sala, is also here, should the board have any questions for, for ownership or operation in regard to the application. And without further ado, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
I'm going to turn to our planner and make sure that we cover properly all of the waivers that you've requested.
Okay.
So I'm going to ask.
So yeah, to the traffic stain and environmental assessment. In addition to that, the existing proposed storm drainage design and improvements, and location description of existing and proposed landscaping, and the combined preliminary and final site plan was not done on separate sheets, so a waiver from that also.
All right, do I have a motion approving the waivers proposed by the planner's report of whatever?
April 23rd.
April 23rd. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve those as described.
Do I have a second?
Second, Hernandez.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I would like to call out our first, this is Mark Walker. He is our project engineer and is the firm of Dykstra Walker.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirming the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Mark Walker, W A L K E R, 21 Bowling Green Parkway, Lake Pecan. Good evening, everybody. I'll, I'll give you my background. I've testified on this board a number of times. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, hold a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, and a master's degree in environmental engineering, and I'm principal at the Dykstra Walker Design Group, and I've been doing this for a very long time, and my license is still current.
It's important. Any questions on the qualifications of this engineer? Hearing and seeing none, sir?
Terrific, thank you. I do have some exhibits. Do you mind handing these out?
Not at all.
So while John's handing those out, I'll just kind of jump into the existing conditions. We have a piece of property that's located on the north easterly corner of Lake Shore Drive and North Beverwick Road, right across the street from the fire department. We are surrounded by mostly commercial properties, except further to the east. We are right up against the zone line between our business zone, which is a B5, and the R4 zone. So we do have some residential properties directly behind the subject property that have frontage on Lake Shore Drive as well as Nicklum's Avenue. So the, today, the property is fully developed, 99% impervious coverage on the property. The building footprint is 1,604 square feet. There's a paved area that butts up to the residential properties, where there's parking that takes place today. Currently, the parking is head-in, pointing towards the residential property. There's a number of nonconformities associated with the property, and our proposal essentially is to refresh and update the property. We will be basically keeping the exact same footprint of the building and adding another story to it. There is a bay window that's going to be added to the front of the building. You can see on the north side of the front facade, the small bay window being added, and in the rear of the building, there's a 27-square-foot addition going on the second floor that helps square off the upstairs area. And our architect will discuss that more in detail. So basically, we're keeping everything essentially the same, but the building's going to be completely redone, and we're going to be redoing the parking lot. So we'll be modifying the parking so the parking space points north rather than pointing towards the residential property. And in the back of the building, we actually have quite a few improvements being proposed, including some landscaping. We really don't have a location for a dumpster on the site that would conform. We've proposed a dumpster behind the front of the building, but still within the front yard setback at seven feet from the right-of-way line, and under the ordinance requirements, we need to be 10 feet from the right-of-way line. So what we've done, though, is we've added some greenery and some landscaping in front of the dumpster and also behind the dumpster. We've also proposed relocation of the generator, and the generator conforms with the ordinance requirements for its location. It's just in front of the dumpster. We provided a handicap parking space under the ADA requirements. If you have four parking spaces or less, you're still required to put in an ADA parking space, however, the sign for the, for the fines are not required. So anybody can park in the ADA parking space. It's common courtesy to leave that one available to the end, but under the ADA requirements, that space is available for parking. But we are striping it with the blue colors and with the wheelchair so everyone knows that that's an ADA space. So we'll have four parking spaces, and then we also have the, the area where people can load and unload. And then by providing the ADA space, we also needed to provide an accessible route to the building. So we've added in a ramp system in the back of the building that's, you know, it's taken up some space, valuable space that we don't really have that much of, but I think we've done a nice job configuring that area with the ramp, the dumpster, the generator, and adding in some landscaping in there to kind of break, break the whole thing up. So we've provided access to the rear of the building. The intent here is for these four parking spaces to be used by the residents. That would be in the apartments above, and we provided access, rear access to the building, and they have separate ingress and egress point to get in and out of the building. Our architect will talk about that a little bit more in detail. Also, with respect to ADA access, the front of the building is ADA compliant. You can simply come right in off from the street without, without having any impediments in your way to go from the sidewalk right into what we're calling a restaurant. We're going to get into that a little bit as well, because the definition of a restaurant is an establishment where people come and sit down and actually get waited on. And in our preparation for this meeting and looking at these definitions, it really more, what we're proposing here really more qualifies as a deli-type service than a restaurant. So I'll get into that with our, our parking calculations. But, so the, the, the parking lot's going to function basically as it is today. We are adding in the dumpster area and the ramps for the building, the landscaping and the generator, and as you can see, our architect will discuss the, the building improvements that we have proposed. We have, as we get into the reports, I just wanted to make the board aware that there is, there's a insufficient sidewalk that, that is along Lake Shore Drive between the curb and the building, has a very steep slope, concrete's all broken up in that area. Our engineer requested that we take a look at that. We agree with him. We're going to be fixing the sidewalk along the side of the building, getting that level, redoing the whole sidewalk so it's fresh and new-looking, and then there will also be, the sidewalk kind of disappears. We'll be extending the sidewalk all the way to the easterly edge of our property line as well. So we'll have a nice, fresh look along that entire side of the site. So with respect to our application, we do have our parking calculations. We had shown that it was a restaurant use. We were proposing one space for 75 square feet for the area where people sit down in the restaurant, and that's based on people bringing your food out to you, a restaurant-type service. But as we went through, as I mentioned, as we went through the ordinance requirements, that, that really does not comply with what we're proposing here. The type of use is, the seating area is just not big enough to have that type of use here. So this is going to be more like a deli-type service, where you go up to the counter, you order what, what you want to eat, you can have a seat, your name or number will be called, you'll go up and get, get your food, and you can take it out with you, or you can sit in the restaurant and eat, or the deli and eat. So with that in mind, we've redone the, the calculations under a deli requirement. It's one parking space for every 250 square feet of gross floor area, so the entire first floor area. Whereas in a restaurant calculation, we're just looking at the seating area only, but under a deli calculation, you use the entire first floor. So using the entire first floor area, we come up with, we're taking out the staircase that goes to the second floor. Staircase is square footage that does not support the first floor, it supports the second. So that gets us to 1,520 square feet at one parking space for 250 square feet is 6.1 parking spaces. And then, as requested, we will count the apartments as two parking spaces for every apartment, and that gets us to 10.1 parking spaces required. We had shown 12 parking spaces on our application, but under the deli use, we're at 10 parking spaces. So as I mentioned, we'll have four parking spaces on-site for the residents. We are proposing that the employees will park in an off-site area, and that the customers will be parking either in a public parking area, or they'll be parking on the street like many of the patrons that use the shops and restaurants in Lake Hiawatha. So I've been discussing exhibit, what I've marked as Exhibit A1, as part of the packet that you have, it's the, the front exhibit. It's our colorized site plan superimposed on aerial photograph. You can see on the lower areas, Lake Shore Drive, and on the west, on the left side, which is to the west, is North Beverwick. And I do have another exhibit, which is Exhibit A2, and A2 is the second exhibit in your pack. This is an expanded aerial exhibit of the area. Down in the bottom right-hand corner, you can see the site that we're here for tonight. In our application, we originally proposed to seek for permit parking behind the parking lot of the fire department. We have received a report from the fire department that said they're not interested in giving us any permits for parking. So in preparation for the meeting tonight, we looked elsewhere, and at the intersection of Mini Ha Ha and North Beverwick, there's another public parking lot with a little over 30 parking spaces that is available. So the plan would be is to have our employees park within the public parking lot and walk down here to work. So this parking lot is available for parking without a permit, so the employees can park there. It's approximately one block away from the establishment, or about 550 feet from, from the parking lot to the, to the building. So I do have a couple of reports, and I can, as we go through the reports, I can address some relief that we need for this particular application. Looking at the GPI's report from April 19th, looking at Sheet 2, Number 5, there's nonconformities on the property. There's continuous screen buffer required against a residential zone use. There's none existing, and we'll talk about that relief as we get into the planner's report. The drive aisle width is currently unknown, there's lack of striping on the site. The driveway width at the right-of-way, 24 feet's required, and the existing opening for the parking area is actually 35 feet, so we're slightly larger than the maximum allowed. The driveway setback from the property line has a requirement of five feet, and currently the paved area is along the two sides, the two adjacent properties, so right on the property And then looking at Number 7 for engineering comments below, there's a discrepancy in our application between the square footages. The square footage of the main floor is 1,604 square feet. We've amended the number of parking spaces required per dwelling unit to be two. We had been using what the RSIS requires, which is 1.8, so the town's requirement's slightly larger, doesn't affect the application in any way, so we'll be going with the town's requirement. Item 8 and Item 9 are requesting the improvements to the sidewalk, which we'll be doing. Number 10 is a request to add some more grades and spot elevations, which we can do. Item 11, we'll have our architect discuss the accessible route once you get into the restaurant. Item 12, the engineer is looking for some more grades and to ensure that we have some slope within, within the landing area for the ADA requirement. That's the report from GPI. With respect to ARH, the first part of the report is primarily dealing with checklist items, which we addressed in the initial part of the meeting. Looking at Sheet 5, and the area and bulk requirements, the, so the use, the dwelling units are conforming use, and no dwelling unit should be located on the ground floor, which we conform because we're on the second floor. No more than 50% of the total floor area of the structure shall be used for dwelling. A dwelling unit or units shall have exterior entrance separate from that of the principal business, which we conform with as well. Looking at the zoning chart, we're in the B5, which requires 4,000 square foot lot, which is what we have. We're required to have 40 feet of frontage. We have 40 feet on North Beverwick and 100 feet on Lake Shore Drive. The minimum lot width is 40 feet, which we also comply with. The building coverage, currently, it's at 40.1%, where 35% is required, so it's a pre-existing nonconforming condition, just slightly above that. We are proposing with adding that little area, 27 square feet in the back of the, back of the building on the second floor, looking at bumping that number up, so we're requesting a variance of 40.8%, where 40.1% currently exists. So slightly larger in that area. The impervious coverage is, is allowed at 90%. The currently is 99% coverage with our landscaping. We're slightly reducing the amount of coverage from 99 to 98.5%. So we will be conforming there. The principal building meets this front yard setback from North Beverwick. However, on Lake Shore Drive, the building is on the right-of-way line, so we're at zero feet from Lake Shore Drive, where 10 feet's required. The minimum side yard setbacks conform. The rear yard setback conforms, we're at 43.4 feet, or 15 feet's required. The maximum building height proposed is two stories, where two stories is allowed. The building height will conform- The building height will conform at 31.7 feet, where 35 feet is allowed. The minimum gross floor area is in excess of what is required. We do require, with respect to our dumpster, we need the front yard setback variance for the dumpster, which I discussed. It's required to be 10 feet or 7 feet. And the, we put a fence around the dumpster area to enclose it, so no one can see into the dumpster area. And we felt that it made sense to have a six-foot-high fence, make sure that no one could see into the dumpster area. Going from four feet to six feet triggers another variance. So we felt that that was, that was a necessary fence height to make sure the dumpster is properly enclosed. With respect to off-street parking, the minimum number of parking spaces, as I discussed, is now 10, where four is proposed. The minimum parking dimensions conform. The minimum driveway setback is five feet, where zero feet exist, and we're keeping the parking lot in the same location, so zero feet will exist after the improvements, so variance is required for that. The maximum driveway width is allowed to be 24 feet. We are existing 35, and will be remaining at 35, so variance is required there. The minimum driveway aisle width requirement is 24. Measured from the back of our parking spaces to the right-of-way line, we are measuring 22 feet, so a variance would be required for that. Our signage is fully in full compliance with the ordinance. We do have some additional comments on Page 7, an additional variance for a buffer. Buffer requirement is to have 10 feet. Currently, there's no buffer, as the property is fully developed. We are required to have a 10-foot buffer from a residential property, and the buffer is to increase five feet for every 10 feet above 15 feet. So we're required to have a 15-foot buffer. Did I get that right?
Um, sounds about right.
Yeah.
You didn't have many, so.
The way I read the ordinance was we needed 15 feet of buffer. So currently, like the parking lot exists, there's no buffer today, there'll be no buffer tomorrow. There is a, there is a white fence along the property line between the residents, solid white fence between the residents and the commercial business, and we are relocating the parking, so the lights aren't pointing directly at the residential property. There's a note here that the generator is permitted in the front yard, as long as it's less than 20 square feet, which we are. And then, we talked about the off-site parking. And then, there's a comment in here about testimony regards to the color and materials of the building, which our architect has prepared a very nice rendering, and we'll discuss that in a bit. Other than that, the only other significant report that we had was the fire department report, which discussed that they were not interested in giving us any permit parking. So I believe that's it. Is there any questions that you have, Tom?
The only, the only question, and it may be for the architect, but this was the, from the fire protection subcode.
About the exhaust, yeah, that's for the architect.
Okay. Other than that, I do not, I think we have all the reports covered. The one thing I would add is that the Morris County Planning Board did send us an email, sent me an email that the application would be exempt. So I did forward that to them before the record. But I have, I have no further questions for Mr. Walker.
Mr. Canjiano, do you have?
Just if you could add a little testimony on the maneuvering of the four vehicles within that drive aisle.
Okay, right. So there is adequate room for a vehicle to back out and turn around, because we do have that 35-foot-wide opening, that that turning maneuver is available for any one of the cars that park in any one of those spaces.
That's not true. Okay, Mr. Canjiano.
So your testimony is that they do not need to be backing out into the street?
I don't believe you'd have to back out into the street to make that turning maneuver.
Thank you. All right. Any members of the board have questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Sanzio.
Are the people that are going to the deli able to park in the back?
The parking's going to be restricted to resident parking.
Residents only?
That's correct.
So it would be, that one handicap spot then would only be associated to a resident?
It would be associated with the residents, but if that parking space is open, it's a courtesy, it's a courtesy parking space. So someone could use it if they're going to the deli.
Okay. And then, currently, when people are going to that deli, are they using the lot to park to go to the deli? Or are they parking in the street in front of the building and then running in?
Yeah, most people are parking in the street. The employees are using the lot.
Yep.
So really, what we're, really, all we're really looking to do here is take the employees from parking in the lot, and putting them in a public parking area, and then having the residents use the lot for their, for their purpose use.
Yeah, I'm just stretching on the amount of parking there. There's nothing there. And it's two one-bedroom apartments.
Two one-bedroom apartments, yeah.
So you could easily have four cars there.
You could have four cars there. That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Other members of the board have questions?
Sure.
Bailey?
The illustration doesn't seem to show any signage for that deli or restaurant. Is someone going to discuss that with us?
Yes, our architect will discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Math?
I'm sorry, Judy, you want to?
No.
Okay. So the parking spaces, are they going to be specifically assigned?
They're not going to be specifically assigned.
But it's going to be for residents only?
Right, there'll be a sign that'll say resident parking only.
Okay. I mean, do you need to maintain the 35-foot driveway to come in, to go in?
Well, it helps with the ability to turn the car around on the lot to be able to pull out.
I mean, my only concern is I'm not crazy about people doing parking maneuvers while people are walking on sidewalks in front. I mean, you've got 22 feet for maneuvering space, a little short of a typical 90-degree aisle, but not terribly short.
Right.
And I guess my other question is, they're all nine feet wide, right?
Correct.
Residential parking usually has really low turnover. If you reduce them to eight and a half, which I think every guidebook says for long-term parking is acceptable, and I know it's, it's going to be a design waiver for us, that could allow you to reduce the footprint a little bit and create some buffer space with the neighbors. I know it's only about a foot and a half, but it's a little better than zero.
Yeah, no, we would, we'd have no objection to that.
It gives you a chance to put a fence up, do some things, maybe a trellis or something to provide some screening.
There is already a, I believe, it's a four or six-foot-high solid white fence. It is the neighbor's fence, obviously, but if we want, if you wanted, we can definitely add in another fence there.
I mean, yeah, but I guess my main concern, though, is I'm not terribly crazy about a bunch of maneuvers that potentially use the sidewalk in the street. I mean, you've got 22 feet on property. I would, you know, much rather you kind of redesign it to narrow the driveway and kind of force people to stay off the sidewalk to maneuver. I don't care if they have to make K-turns, make a couple maneuvers if it's a resident.
Right.
I'm not terribly worried about, you know, efficient turning in and out.
Yeah, so originally, so the parking is put in this way, and there is some slope on this part of the parking lot coming down. And so these parking spaces were in a bit of, bit of a slope, like more than 5% within this area. So we rotated the parking, we got the ADA parking space closer to the door this way. It can be designed. We also wanted to get the parking so it wasn't pointing towards the residents. So there are some benefits to doing it this way. This is the flattest part of the lot, where the parking spaces are, and then it gets a little steeper. We could flip the parking around so it's pointed towards the neighbors and create an accessible route for the ADA space, which would be the spot on the highest part of the lot.
I have no problem with the orientation you could design. I just have a concern about the fact that the turning templates you showed in your plan, and what you described, make it sound like you're planning to use the sidewalk in the street as part of the parking maneuvers. And I'd rather see, I'd rather see some separation, so that the, even if it's a small fence or something in a narrower driveway, to keep the parking maneuvers away from the sidewalk.
Okay.
That's what I was going to ask about fencing, too. So right now, I'm looking at this, and this is right, this is the white fence of the people in the house there, okay?
Other members of the board have questions of this testimony?
I did have one question.
Yes, please.
In the fire department's email, there was a question about whether the building was going to be sprinkled.
Our architect will handle it.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else hearing and seeing none? Are there members of the public who have questions of this witness's testimony at this time? Please come forward, identify yourselves, and please ask a question. This is not a time for statements, but for questions.
Good evening. I'm Mike Scannello. I live on the corner in the Comus and Lakeshore. My question is, where are all these people parking? Because right now, they're parking in front of our houses, and the four spots are filled up. And how about the oil truck that comes and picks up the waste oil and the renderings and the waste mannequin truck? How do you call them, what all those cars are parking at? This puts a big burden on our street. It's happening already, and they're not even putting apartments up here yet. People don't go, that is a restaurant. If you go sit there on a Friday or Saturday night, you'll see people having parties and stuff in there. We watch it every week, because they're parking in front of our house.
You've asked your question, and I'd like to have him answer.
Well, like any business, you're directly adjacent to a business zone. There's many businesses in the area. We are not the only business in the area. So obviously, every business has services that are associated with it, and there is a degree of service, pickups, things like that, but trucks are going to need to service the buildings.
How are those trucks getting it? Four cars or five cars are putting in a parking lot?
Well, there's already, there's already, there's a parking lot there now.
Yeah, but those cars aren't there when those trucks come.
This is time for asking questions.
You're just going to ask, yes. I think you have to go next.
My biggest concern is, all 44 corners of that street represent.
Right now, it's just for questions of the engineer. You're going to have a comment. You'll be able to add, to just say your comments.
My question is just where are people going to park? Because they're parking on our street to block our houses.
Thank you. Would you spell your last name for me before you said?
N-I-E-L-L-O.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Drew Wazalouski. I live at 161 Lakeshore Drive. I'm also a proud resident of Lake Hiawatha. I love the place. I've lived in there eight years, divorced, two children.
Could you also spell your last name?
Wazalouski, W-A-S-I-L-E-W-S-K-I.
Thank you.
I love Lake Hiawatha. I love what's coming of it. I love that these restaurants are opening up. I think it's fantastic. I think it's great for the community. I think this is a, this is a good idea, but it's just too much for one place. Now, my question is safety. You have the fire department across the street, you have the 7-Eleven on the other corner, the gas station on this corner, and yet there's a lot of accidents already on that corner. If anybody lives in Lake Hiawatha, you hear all the accidents that happen there. Now you're putting more tenants and more people on that corner.
Are you asking a question?
To him, yes, to safety. And on the back of the building, we're not showing also, is there a fire escape? Is there going to be, what is going to the back of the building look like? Because we are tenants, we are people that live in the back, and we're going to be seen. It's a six-foot fence, it's not going to hide what's there.
Mr. Chairman, there's just, I don't mean, I don't want to interrupt him, but there were a number of questions.
Yes.
And I would just like to have.
I had to listen to a lot of things as well, so I have a lot of questions. I apologize, so go ahead.
No, that's fine. I would just, I would just like to have Mr. Walker the opportunity to answer your questions.
So I guess the first one was safety, right?
Yep.
So we've shown on our plans that we can turn around a vehicle on our plans. An automobile parked in our lot can make the K-turn and pull out forward onto the site, onto the street. So from a safety standpoint, we meet that criteria with the maneuver.
When they're doing deliveries, where are they going to do the deliveries? In the front of the store where the fire department is, or in the back where you're saying the parking is?
I believe they would do, do the deliveries in the back.
Where there's four parking spots for tenants?
There's four parking.
So how are they going to do a delivery there if there's tenants in the back?
It's 22 feet.
It's very tight. They can't even do it now with not even apartments on top.
You asked me a question.
I'm just explaining to you the situation that you don't see every day.
Well, the parking lot's going to be changing, the way it's configured.
You're maxed out. You said yourself you're maxed out on everything.
The parking lots, configuration of parking lots changes.
I don't know if the public can see the exhibits.
No, I don't get to see the front of it.
So maybe you can just rotate that one.
We could pass one of these around, too. I have actually.
Actually, I do as well, so. Sure.
So we're going, we're going to be, right now, the parking is pointed in this way. We're going to point the parking away from the street and away from the residents.
That's what they're doing now, and it's still congested. It doesn't work. It doesn't work.
What do you mean it's congested?
It's congested. I should have taken a picture of today, this is what it looks like, because it's, they have the cars maxed out already in there. And that's just of, just of the restaurant.
There's four cars in the parking lot?
Full.
That's okay.
More, more, because they have it there, and they're, they only even block the cars because there are employees there. It's, you said yourself it's maxed out, it's not going to work in my eyes. I'm not a building inspector, but I don't think it's going to work. And I'm not anybody, a professional, but I am a person that, so it's, it lives there and you see.
So it's a site management issue, right? It's only four parking spaces.
You're putting more already what's there now.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Walker is trying to answer questions.
I'm sorry. I'm very, I'm very upset.
Yeah, I understand.
Because there's so many things I have on your questions.
Right now, this is just questions. You'll be able to provide your testimony under oath shortly, though. Yep.
Hi, Daniella Greenwood. I live in 172 Lakeshore Drive, the house right behind where that's proposed. We paid for that white fence you're talking about. So I have a question about privacy, because right now, you're talking about my fence that we paid for, that that's providing some sort of privacy. That's a huge building. It's looking directly over, there's, it's behind one residence, but there's three backyard, there's three residents that we already overlook and have to deal with, like, traffic and issues and things like that. Of course, we understand we're behind businesses.
You just have to make it into a question.
Okay, so my question is, what are you doing for the three private, the three residents who back up directly there in terms of their privacy and their right to be able to go out in their backyard? Like, are you planning to build anything that's going to do that, like them overlooking the properties? Was that considered at all?
So what we have, we have a beautiful design for the building that's going to be built, so we'll check and discuss a little bit further. We discussed options about creating more space, where we could add greenery or more fencing if we would like, but there is limited opportunities to do that. And the whole, it's not just our property, it's the whole stretch, all the way down through.
No, the property isn't that large. You can take out the space and overlook out the.
Just some, this is the question time, but yep, we can. Any other questions of the applicant's engineer?
The fire station, will we be seeing the fire station?
Our architect's going to talk about the back of the building.
Any other questions of the witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to call our, our second witness, Mr. Chuck and Mr. Tony Garrett. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call our, our second witness, Mr. Chuck and Mr. Tony Garrett. We are offering him as the architect for the project and also as the planner.
Okay.
I wanna have separation between myself and the attorney, because I'm fighting over a cold, okay?
Really, I wish I had a dollar for every time I heard that. Over otherwise.
All right, if you please raise your right hand, you swear affirming the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Anthony Garrett, G-A-R-R-E-T-T. My firm is Bellow Garrett Group Architects and Planners, P.C., 161 Main Street, Ridgefield Park, New Jersey, 07660.
Could you provide the board with some background on your experience in licensure?
Sure. I'm a licensed architect and a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. Both licenses are in good stead. I'm also NCARB certified, licensed in, as an architect in probably 12 different states. I've not had the pleasure of being before the planning board in Parsippany, but I have testified before the zoning board and Board of Adjustment, and I've been accepted as an expert in the field of architecture and planning. I've testified across the state, and I was the former chairman of the Town of Booton Land use board, combined land use board. Oh, I graduated with a bachelor's degree from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute in 1984.
Any questions by members of the board on the qualifications as this expert? Hearing and seeing none.
I just wanted to see you. I'll go as quickly as I can, but again, I may need to take a sip of water somewhere along the line. So, I'm gonna start with the architectural testimony, and I will try not to repeat a lot of what Mr. Walker stated. I would like to enter a couple, an exhibit. I don't know what number we're up to.
We have already three.
Three.
Okay. I have a series of photographic material. One is a rendering, and then the other two sheets are an aerial photograph and a photo array in which I took the pictures. And they accurately depict the residential area. So, we were, we were retained by our client to design a second floor addition. Originally, we had hoped to get the two-bedroom units up there, but the footprint of the building caused us to reduce it down to two one-bedroom units. It's essentially over the same footprint as the, as the building that exists today. There's a slight overhang of 27 square feet in the rear, which covers the entranceway to the building, and it actually gives us some benefit of cover when people are coming in and out of the building. They won't be standing in the rain or snow or inclement weather. The main alterations to the first floor comprise an access there at the rear of the building.
Just a procedural thing, this packet is represented by the pictures shown on one of your.
Yes, it is.
If you could make that easily seen by the public, please.
I will, but I'm gonna switch for a second and go to the floor plans and elevations of the building, if that's okay? You have your packets, so hopefully you can see that. So, I'm gonna use the handheld mic, and I will walk through the architectural design. This is the second floor, and this is the first floor. There's an entry door from the first floor that's accessible from steps and from a barrier-free accessible ramp. You heard testimony from Mr. Walker. It's the closest proximate location to the handicapped-stripped stall. The main alterations are, to the first floor, are in the rear of the building. We are removing a portion of the walk-in box and to construct a new stair, which would be access from the back door through a vestibule. We've created a, an airlock vestibule, which has access to the restaurant area as well as access, secured access to the residential units upstairs. We relocated a three-compartments sink to accommodate that, and we're raising the floor in the utility room, which is currently sunken down. We don't know why it was done that way, but we wanna keep everything at the one level. So, you come up a couple of steps and enter into the building or the ramp. Toilet facilities remain as-is. We did, we're proposing to construct a screen wall just to hide a little bit of the kitchen area. The second floor, you would come up, it's a scissor stair. You'd end up with a, in a second floor area here with access to a living dining room for Unit A, which is a one-bedroom unit, one bath, adequate penetration beneath the building code, and a nice U-shaped kitchen in here. And then the sec, and that totals 818 square feet. The second unit, slightly smaller, it's 744 square feet, but similarly, it is a one-bedroom, living dining with windows facing Lake Shore Drive. There are some windows on the rear of the building in the stairwell, but again, those windows are really just to bring some daylight into the building and add some interest to the rear facade. This area here, over, there's a line here, if you pick it up on the, on the floor plan, there's a little bit of area here that covers the entranceway to the building. So, if I came up the steps, I would be underneath this little portion of the second floor here that kinda hangs out. That's the change to the footprint. I will switch back to the rendering in a moment and go through materials, but as part of our effort, we reviewed the master plan for the township of Parsippany Troy Hills. There's some specific language regarding Lake Hiawatha, the central business district. It is really your downtown, and a lot of the goals and objectives and precepts in the master plan look to strengthen that. So, what we're proposing really is a complete refresh of this building. It used to be the old Jeremiah's. It was kinda that yellow stucco, wasn't terribly attractive, in my opinion. The owner did make some minor improvements to the facades of the building, but as part of this renovation, we're really proposing some significant improvements. We would be redoing a whole new storefront at the ground floor. The storefront would be a black anodized material. This is representative of what that would be. And then we are proposing to clad the building in a combination of materials. We would be using a, an EPIS exterior insulating finish system. We've used it before. It's manufactured, a tool joints, and it will replicate common brick. So, at the end of the day, this will look like a red brick building with the, with the black anodized storefront. We have some decorative lighting, sconces, and along with some pilasters, which are clad in an aluminum composite metal panel, again, in that black color. We're really trying to update the look of this building. All of the windows will be energy efficient. The inclusion of the exterior insulating finish system will make this building compliant with energy codes, where right now, it is vastly under what's required by a current energy code. So, this will be a much better performing building from an energy usage point of view. We're breaking up the facades with the use of some hardy plank siding, giving a more residential character on that second floor. And again, we're putting transoms over the windows on the second floor to bring more daylight in and give some visual interest to the, to the building. I refer here to the east elevation, which is the rear of the building facing the residences. We're depicting the ramp, the entrance door. Here's the second floor, same palette of materials, red brick, hardy plank siding, and the aluminum composite metal panel. There's articulation to the building. This bumps out. That's the current utility room. We are bumping out the second floor slightly here with the hardy plank siding. So, what you're looking at now is the back of a restaurant if you were to go there today. In our opinion, it would still be a restaurant, but we're dressing it up, and by adding the second floor and the articulation to the elevation, we think it's a vast improvement to what's there today. You'll also see at the, that would be the southwest corner of the building, we have a little turret. And now, I think I'm gonna switch, if you don't mind, because I think the rendering is a much better representation. So, I will get out of the way so the public can see it. Try to. So, this is the red brick material, the simulated EPIS material, the hardy plank siding. There's a decorative element here. It's hard to see, but this is actually the signage. The signage is right above the new entrance door. It's compliant with the ordinance. And again, we're using goose neck lights to illuminate it, so there'll be no internal illumination to the sign. And, you know, we're trying to be respectful of the area and really create, in my opinion, a gateway to Lake Hiawatha. You know, I traveled it tonight just one last time, and as you come north on North Beverwick Road, you pass the shopping centers on either side where the food town used to be and Troy Hills Plaza, you don't get a sense yet that you're really in the downtown area, in my opinion, just by the nature of those uses. Kinda drifting into some planning testimony, but it kinda was the basis of our design. We come to this intersection. You have the firehouse, which is a two-story, 35-foot-high building, and then we have this building immediately across the street from the fire station, again, 31 feet, and it's two stories, and it really creates an entry port, in my opinion, to downtown Lake Hiawatha. I'll get into that a little bit more in my planning testimony, but from an architectural standpoint, this is what we're presenting aesthetically. There were, we did go through the reports, and with respect to the fire department, one of their comments was the exhaust shaft from the restaurant. And it's not cold out on our drawing, but if you look at A100, I don't, I don't need to turn it around again. There's an area in the bathroom, which is just a square. That would be the shaftway right above where the hood exhaust would be for the existing ansel, existing exhaust over the restaurant. We're not proposing to change any of that. However, it would run through that shaftway, it'd be fire-rated, and it will exit the building 10 feet inboard of the north wall of the building. So, that was one of the comments in the fire code letter. The other one is, the residential uses will be sprinkled. They must be, as required by the Uniform Construction Code in New Jersey. The resident, the commercial space does not require a fire sprinkler system. However, there is an ansel system, that's a fire extinguishing system, right in the hood that will extinguish any kind of grease fire there. So, the building, the residential uses must be sprinkled, though, by code. Again, I think those were the only specific comments that I needed to address in the engineer's and fire subcode officials' report. So, at this point, I'm kinda concluding my architectural testimony. It's up to the board's choice whether you want me to entertain questions on architectural only or just launch into the planning testimony.
Historically, we like to keep them separate. So, I'm gonna ask the members of the board or our professionals have questions on the architectural. Mr. Meth?
Two quick questions. So, the building itself, is it the same building with just a different facade, or are you redoing the building?
It's the same building with, with new facade materials, and obviously, the second floor is new.
Okay.
And actually, I'm glad you asked that question, because I wanted to mention, we will be essentially building what I would call a sarcophagus over the existing building. We have enough room that we don't wanna mess with the commercial space down there for as long as possible. At some point, there'll be some imposition, but my structure will be designed to really go on top of that existing roof structure. If we can't use the roof structure, it's not structurally sound to do that. However, right here, there's an element, and right here, there's an element in the building. Those currently are existing pilasters in the wall, and I believe there are columns in there, so we've kind of utilized some of that structure in the building. But we're not planning on raising the building.
Okay. I take it you're gonna have to use a crane then to do the second floor?
From a means and method standpoint, I think this is really gonna be smaller, you know, it's probably gonna be wood frame construction with a lull that make, you know, once that, the roof structure will be there, so they should be able to get a lull to get a lot of that material up onto that roof. And I don't know that we, you know, we necessarily need a crane in there to do it. I'm not saying we won't. A contractor may bid it a different way, but from my standpoint, this could be built without the use of a crane.
Okay. Next question. To the extent that one of the public was concerned about privacy, I noticed there's basically one window in an apartment in the back, and then there's, the other ones are sort of a stairwell and a common area, right? I, I don't know if you have up on the boards the rear elevation.
Yep. I can get that for you.
Overhang.
Yeah, the overhang.
The overhang.
Is there any way to minimize that window a little bit? I know you want natural light, but to at least, you know, respect the privacy of neighbors?
Yes, we would stipulate to reducing the size of that. First, we can eliminate the transoms. That's number one. We can also reduce the overall width of that window, certainly, and we could bring the sill height up a little bit. I mean, architecturally, I don't think it is pleasing, but I think I have the talent to make it look nice. So, the short answer is yes, we can do that.
All right. Dare I even ask if you could put them on the other side, on the north side?
I can't because they are, it's a zero lot line. It's fire-rated.
Okay.
It's, it's, we can't do it, sorry.
Because I, I understand that feeling.
I would prefer to.
You're in your backyard.
I would stipulate, though, that we would have window treatments on the inside of these windows, whether it be blinds or some sort of shading system, that again, would, we'll stipulate that and add it to our documents so that you don't have somebody on the second floor peering down onto those properties.
How could that be? I'm, I'm, no, I mean.
Well, how do you prevent them?
How do you prevent that?
How do you prevent them from opening the blinds?
Well, they can open the blinds, but we, you know, we do this a lot in office buildings when they're facing residential properties, where you put blinds in there, and, you know, hopefully, they're gonna be good neighbors and respect the environment. But we'll certainly minimize the window opening.
Okay. I have a question. Is there any room on the back end of the lot that's towards the resident that you could put more landscaping, i.e. like, privacy trees that, you know?
Well, I'm not sure who suggests. Maybe it was Mr. Meth, reducing the width of the, the parking spaces to eight foot six. The handicap stall and the crop-off area is already eight feet.
Yep. I mean, basically, that could shoot out your foot and a half, right?
Well, actually, it might be a little, yeah. It'll be an extra foot and a half, but again, I think, I don't know that the pavement is right on the property line. I did survey it, but what I would suggest we do is put up some sort of trellis, kind of plants that will grow vertically. You're not gonna get trees to grow back there, but I recently did this where we didn't even have the, we didn't have the ground to do it with. We actually put large planters with integral trellises, and it's working. The greenery is growing up that trellis and providing a visual break, and also, you know, just, it's nice to be looking at green. We certainly can do that. And I think a foot and a half is enough to do it.
Good.
Yeah.
Again, I, I'll go on architectural. I will, I will bite. I will, I will bite my tongue for a moment. Oh, there was a question from the public directed to Mr. Walker about fire escapes.
Yes.
And we are not required to have a fire escape in this building. The windows are large enough in the bedrooms that they qualify as egress windows. That's our second means of egress out of the building. So the one stair is fine. It's only two units. This is not even a, it's not even a multi-family dwelling. It's basically two-family of a commercial space. So the short answer is one stair required. No fire escapes on the back of the building. The bedrooms are in the front, the egress windows are in the front, and they don't require a fire escape.
And it's sprinkled.
And it's sprinkled.
Okay. Other members of the, Andrew?
Yeah, just got a question on the front door location at the corner. You know, it's existing door location. That is a very, very steep sloped sidewalk. Looks like it is over about a foot of grade from the road to that. It's going to be really hard pressed to make that sidewalk work at that location. Is there any consideration or could there be any consideration for either adjusting the finished floor elevation or sliding that door away from the corner a little bit? There's, it varies from a foot of grade break at the gutter line, right at the corner there in North Bev, Beverwick. Or like your rendering kind of shows it flat, it's, it's to about a foot, a foot, over a foot, so.
Clearly, that sidewalk is not barrier-free accessible.
Yeah, it's, the cross slope is insane.
The cross slope and the slope itself, it's a ramp. It's not a sidewalk. It's not one in twenty, not even close to one in twenty. We do have barrier-free and level entry along North Beverwick. In addition to that, by implementing the ramp, and I think it was one of the questions, it might have been yours.
I'm talking about North Beverwick. That's the store I'm talking about.
I know. It's at the south end of North Beverwick.
Yes.
We could look at relocating it, certainly. It does kind of affect the architecture a little bit, but I think, again, we can, we can make it work.
I think there may be some coordination between your team and the engineers, and the engineer to make that.
We don't coordinate with engineers. We just do it now. We can certainly, if that's a, if the board feels it.
I take at the end of the day, it's going to, something's going to be needed here.
Also, we do have the ramp from the rear of the building. So if somebody were, you know, in a wheelchair, they can gain access to the first floor of the building. And there was a comment that it goes through the kitchen. Yeah, there's not, that's not the most picturesque, picturesque way to enter the building, but this is an existing building. There's no prohibition on going through the kitchen. It's not a required exit, but we have a required exit out to Beverwick Road. It's more of a convenience to get somebody in and out of the building.
I even think if you just move the door just on the other side of that pier, may go a long way.
Okay.
You know, just what's that, five, seven feet, whatever that is.
Understood. I think we can do it.
And Mr. Chairman, just to add to that statement, there was testimonies from Mr. Walker that Mr. Garrett would address item number 11, the FBI report, that discussion that was just held, that covers that number 11.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah, that's, that's in line with the reworking the sidewalk on Lake Shore because the door is, is higher than, if you lower the sidewalk, there's going to be a gap, there's going to be a step introduced. And I know that the goal would be not to introduce a step for folks walking down the sidewalk. That would like some accessible access.
But since we, and Mr. Walker, I just conferred with Mr. Walker, we can relocate the doors slightly. And we did not mention, since the engineer's comment regarding the repair of the sidewalks along Lake Shore, we would propose to put in one street tree with a grating there so that we kind of break that area up with a little greenery. So it'd be a very narrow conical-type tree, but we would, you know, that would increase. It's not increasing our landscaping on site per se, but it's a nice amenity for the whole neighborhood.
Where, where would that go?
That would go on the Lake Shore Drive portion of the sidewalk. And currently, there's a sewer inlet towards the east side and there's some sort of obstruction at the north side as well. So we would propose it basically in the middle of the building. In the middle of the facade, I should say. We're not planning to.
My comment on that, that's great. I don't, I mean, I have no objections to it. That is in the right of way and you'll need to have at least some coordination with the township.
Understood.
On that improvement.
Understood.
Okay. Other members of the board have questions of this testimony and the architecture at this time? Yes, Ms. Winter?
I think most of my questions are really operational, so I don't know that you're the person to address them, but I'll start.
I'll do my best or I'll defer.
So is there an existing restaurant operating right now there?
There's an existing food emporium operating there.
And that's the use, that's proposed to continue?
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know what the extensive leases are, et cetera.
Because part of this is really, it's parking and how that, what exactly is that use? I notice on the floor plan for the commercial space that there's no office. There's typically an office, even though they're usually tiny with a restaurant. Is that lost as part of?
It's not a private office, but the point of service would, you know, that would kind of be a de facto.
Well, there's usually a place where there's a safe and storage for credit card receipt, sorry.
We do have the utility room back here, which could be utilized for that.
Okay, so it's not purely intended for mechanical utilities or...
Currently, there's an air handler in there that's providing air conditioning. We would, when we get to the MEP design, there would be rooftop equipment, you know, for condensers up on the roof with an air handler in the residential unit. So we don't see the need necessarily to have a full utility room. And again, this is not corporate, you know, they need to put a safe in there. There's adequate room. There are a couple of water heaters in there, which will remain.
Okay. Yeah, and, you know, I think I'm more curious about whether this is truly a restaurant or a delicatessen in that particular use and would like some testimony from someone regarding that. I mean, either way, you're going to need a variance for parking. It will just be the degree of that variance.
The level of, you know, how intense the variance would be. In either event, the position here is that the employees of the quote, "restaurant," food emporium, would be parking off-site. I don't want to get into the planning testimony, but I eventually will.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, other members of the public who have questions on this testimony at this time? If you'd come forward, identify yourself and ask your question.
I'm just going to wait until you guys, we talk to you guys as well. I don't understand how this stuff goes, so.
This is just, just trying to elicit testimony from...
I understand. I think it's like mixed.
We'll wait, we'll wait.
Your comments come later.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, and you actually, you get sworn in and you actually testify as to the conditions that have prompted you to come before us.
Thank you, thank you.
So, all right. No questions from the public? Now, if you want to move on to the planning testimony.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So in the interest of not repeating testimony that's been provided by Mr. Walker, I'll just briefly describe the entirety of the area. It's the B5 business zone. We're joining R4. There are commercial, commercial operations up and down Beverwick Road. Right across the street is the Lake Hiawatha Fire Department. Across the street, there, immediately across the street, there are actually two restaurants. The Thai Cuisine. And then next door to that, there is a coffee shop, which is called the Tierra Encanto Coffee Shop. So I don't, I think it seems like you've had the coffee there and it's pretty good. Okay. And again, there's no parking provided for either of those operations. Next to that, there's China City. There is an existing four-car plus or minus, it's on the strip parking area alongside the China City. On our side of the street, immediately north is Sushi Koo, sushi shop. They do have some off-street parking. Again, it's not clearly designated, but it's probably in the, I saw six cars parked in there tonight. Moving north, there's a Mexican restaurant, Los Carnales Mexican Restaurant. No parking is provided. That's also in a building with Jackson Cuts, which is a barber shop, and En Vogue, which is a salon, a women's salon. In addition to that, across the street, as we move a little farther north, there's a commercial building called Empirical Labs Inc., which is, again, that's a fully developed site. The building is probably in the neighborhood. I didn't, this is anecdotal, but it's in the eighty to ninety percent of that site is occupied by the building based upon mapping that's available through the New Jersey GIS. There is no parking provided for that building. Then as you move farther north, we get to a, there's actually a mixed use, some offices in residential. They do have some parking. They have about six parking spaces. The footprint of that building is a little bit larger than our building. Oh, I didn't mention, and again, I can, I can also refer to the photo array, the redistributed. By the way, I have some extra copies for the residents if you'd like. Hold on a second. It's the rendering, this aerial photograph and the photo array. Also, right across the street from us where the coffee shop is, that's a two-story building. I did not get up into the second floor. However, my observations and my photographs, and I'm referring to photograph 26 on that photo array. That depicts the building, two-story, looks like there's residential, it appears to be residential use on the second floor, but again, that's anecdotal to my testimony. Just running through the photographs, the first series of photographs, really one, two and three, they show the, the western extremity of the site, of the environs along Washington Avenue, single-family residential. Four, five are the fire department. Six, seven, eight, nine and 10, again, include the residential areas along Washington Street, the parking lot behind the fire department, the 711 and the, and the fire department itself. 11 and 12 show the 711 and the gas station at the corner of Lake Shore and North Beverwick. This is looking farther down towards Bosporus Restaurant. Bosporus is located in a strip building with at least two other tenants in there. They have some parking. It looks like it's a shared parking arrangement with your neighbor. I happen to go to Bosporus a lot. I like the food. I, I don't drive from Ridgefield Park. I live in Montego, so it's relatively close for me.
But how'd you become the chair of Bootten Town Land use Board?
Pardon?
Oh, you moved?
They threw me out. They excommunicated me from, no, I moved to Montego about 25 years ago. Photographs 14 show the fence along the, the neighbor's property. That's 14 and 20. And then the rest of these photographs, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, they depict the residential neighborhood to the east where the neighbors are from. We have, this is looking towards Sushi Koo. You can see there's a dumpster just floating around at the parking lot. That will no longer be, should this application get approved, that would be screened in by the dumpster enclosure. Then the last series of photographs really run up North Beverwick on our side or the east side of the street. And the last three pictures here depict the, the existing building that's there now. So again, the nice thing about, not the only nice thing, but one of the nice things about Lake Hiawatha is it's a defined downtown area. It's walkable. You can go from shop to shop. You're not pulling into a sea of parking. This has been identified in the master plan and it's something to preserve and enhance. The master plan even goes as far as to say that they recommend changes to the ordinance that allow three stories buildings in Lake Hiawatha. That hasn't been codified, but the upper two floors being residential. From a planning standpoint, it's a good thing to have people living on these main streets in this, in these apartments. They tend to frequent all of the commercial uses there. So there's a, it gives li, a liveliness to the downtown area where you're not rolling sidewalks up, you know, after dark. So I think the master plan recognizes that, recognizes this area of Lake Hiawatha as having a lot of the components to make that work. We also feel that the massing of this building is appropriate. The height matches the fire department across the street. And there are other two-story buildings along North Beverwick. And again, I would, I think from a, we'll get to the exact variance relief that we're seeking, but, you know, there were other things in the review of the master plan, flexible standards for mixed use, street plantings were recommended, small-scale mixed uses were, again, that's something that page 120 had a whole list of the master plan of, of things that should be included. And then we get to the off-street parking, which they actually deal with as well in the master plan. The master plan, which is a document that your board approved, it's a recommended approval to the town council, said that it really is important at this point to start looking at the parking requirements, especially in the local business zones, and that overparking for uses is not something that is recommended, that you really should have an appropriate amount of parking. And I have to say, having the municipal parking lot set asides there really is a great thing. I do a lot of work in Bootten still. And Bootten actually has an ordinance where, for Main Street, where we can't, they can't put any more parking in, if you're willing to make a contribution to the parking fund, it offsets your parking requirements. I don't think we can just do that because there's no ordinance in place to do that. But this is becoming a more, much more commonplace planning approach to parking requirements in central business districts. We also do a lot of work in TNEC and in their B2 zone. If you're within a certain distance, 500 feet, I think it is, of a municipal parking lot, that you do not have to provide any parking for your residential uses. And we're essentially proposing our parking for the use of the resident, the two apartments upstairs, because in our opinion, and I've visited that parking lot various times over the last couple of days at Minnehaha Boulevard and North Beverwick, just tonight, I went through there, there were thirty, I counted 31 stalls, two of which were occupied by school buses. I don't even think that's really what that was designed to be, but including those school buses, there were only 14 vehicles in that parking lot. And our client, who owns the building, runs a business in Lake Hiawatha, in discussions with him and subsequent visits to the Minnehaha parking lot, we've seen a lot of empty stalls in that parking lot at different times of the day.
Okay. Just one question. How far of a walk is that from the site?
550 feet.
Okay.
So it's a tenth, it's a little over a tenth of a mile. Just to give you kind of a comp, residential site improvement standards give you, and we're not following that per se, but under a quarter mile, if there is public... and we're not following that per se, but under a quarter mile, uh, if there is, uh, public to public transit, uh, they give you a vast reduction in the amount of parking that's required for a use. Uh, we do have public transportation runs up and down North Beverly Road, the gate seventy-one bus, uh, and that can take you down if you need to get to the, uh, Beverly Park and Ride facilities to take a bus into the city, and I don't think that should be ignored. Uh, but our walking distance is not excessive. Five hundred fifty feet is two football fields.
Is there, I'm, I sort of recall a guideline based on a shopping center about how far you make, or office building, about how far you make parking spaces. And the number six hundred sticks out in my head. Do you, are you familiar with that at all?
Um, I, I, it would be anecdotal. I did not look that up. I apologize for that. But I would point out one other thing. In my preparation for the, um, the hearing tonight, I went through your ordinance, again, in detail, and I just want to make sure I get the section right. Under, yeah, uh, four-thirty, I believe it's one-twenty-three. The planning board, uh, paragraph Y, the planning board does have the ability to, um, allow for off-site parking under certain guidelines. I don't know that we necessarily meet those guidelines, but it's something that's codified in your ordinance, uh, that you, in my mind, I interpret that to mean that the board and its professionals feel that off-site parking is not something to be frowned on, you know, if, if appropriate. And in our opinion, having the employees park five hundred fifty feet away, one block, one long block away, is not unreasonable. Um, there is a lot of street parking north of our site on Beverly Road every time I've been there, and it's been varying times. Um, there's, there's usually a plethora, I love using words like plethora, of available parking along North Beverly Road. Uh, there are a couple of restaurants a little farther north, uh, near the, near the parking lot. Uh, they would be, there's an Indian restaurant up there, and then another, I believe, uh, Hispanic-type restaurant up there, that, again, they don't appear to have any parking on their property. They are closer to the Minnehaha parking lot, though I will point out. In terms of the justification for the variances, really seeking C-variance relief, and I think we, uh, qualify under a C-one hardship and a C-two flexible variance of a hardship really applies from most of our existing non-conforming conditions. It's an existing building. Uh, it would be a hardship to tear that down and try and meet all the setbacks that are there. It would really devalue the property almost into inutility. Um, the transition area, again, against the residential, very difficult. Currently, there is zero transition area. Um, there is a fence there, uh, however, it's not our fence. And again, I think the suggestion of reducing the width and being creative with some trellis planting really, uh, can address the, uh, the buffer area. Uh, the coverage is existing, and the setback along Lake Shore Drive is existing. So these are, I think, are justified, positive criteria is justified, because they are hardships on the site. With respect to the, uh, C-two flexible variance, um, we think that we're promoting a few goals of the municipal land use law with this development. Um, providing different housing types for, uh, ever-changing population. One of that's, uh, one of, that's goal B. Um, we also, I, in my opinion, um, have sufficient space to accommodate the proposed use when we're viewed in the light that we're viewing it. And I guess number one is, I think, I like the thing that the building we're proposing really gives a sense of place and a sense of entry to Lake Hiawatha, which is really creating a desirable visual environment, uh, using, um, you know, creative techniques. We stipulated that we would include some street tree here. Actually, we do show that slope in the sidewalk, by the way. It's, and in the rendering, it's actually pretty realistic. Um, again, I think the facade improvements, uh, really, um, not oversigning the building. We have a compliance sign on the building, and putting finished facade materials on all sides of the building is a huge improvement to what's there today. Um, again, I, we are, um, I would say the parking is the most significant variance. And what we've found over time is, uh, parking tends to be self-regulating. Uh, if there's not enough parking, people don't go to the place. They'll just buy passage. So, you know, the idea that because it's there, all of a sudden, you're going to have mass pe- you know, massive people trying to double park or parking in the residential areas, we don't really think that would be happening here. Um, from a negative criteria, uh, we are proposing to repair the sidewalk. Um, there's no substantive change to the commercial use on the site. Uh, and we are providing the, um, the residential parking, uh, for the residents overnight. So they will not be parking on the street, nor will they have to park in that lot over on Minnehaha, which doesn't permit parking from one to four in the morning. So I think when you have an application like this, you really, uh, you know, you should look at the totality of what we're asking for. There, most of them are very minor. They're existing non-conformities. Even the increase in coverage is very slight, and if we implement the narrower stalls, we're further decreasing the impervious coverage on the site, which is a good thing as well. I think this board can grant these variances without causing substantial detriment to the zone plan, nor will I think, nor do I think it will affect the public health, safety, and welfare. This is not a very large building. Uh, it's light in the air will be available to the adjoining residences to the south. Uh, I would point out, actually, you can see on Mr., um, Mr. Walker's exhibit here, that a lot of that restaurant that is backing up to the properties as you go farther up, you know, Keemis, I think it is, those are behind Sushi Koo. That's not our property, okay? That, that's existing over there. We're proposing to make some, you know, improvements here where we can, and I don't think that should be lost on the board. So I think the variances can be granted. Have I missed anything, Mr. Miller?
No, that was, uh, did that have a negative criteria in my list when you covered it?
Christine, do you have, uh?
Um, to Gordon's comment about the walking distance, under a thousand feet is generally considered walkable. Most people are willing to walk that far, so in that sense, being at what, five?
I thought it was a thousand, but I wasn't comfortable, so I'm glad you brought that up.
Um, yeah, and it's a beautiful building, and I think aesthetically, it, it would be an improvement. Um, I still am concerned regarding the parking, that you're adding, the use, you're adding two, um, apartment units, and you're removing all the parking for the existing restaurant slash Alcatasent use. Um, and then that, whether that qualifies as a C-two variance ultimately will be the board's decision. Um, but I'm not sure that those, all the benefits outweigh, uh, the additional detriment for the parking. You could make the improvements to the building, um, without adding the apartments and increasing, uh, the demand on the public parking on the street and within that lot. Um, so, uh, that, that's, I mean, my comment there.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sanziel.
Um, don't disagree, it's a, a beautiful building. Um, I know you provided testimony about all the other businesses going down the road. I think, obviously, some, some core differences that I'd see. There's no parking in front of that building all the way down past Sushi Koo. So I'm, I'm going to say that that's probably two, three hundred feet of parking on the street that's gone, right?
I'd say two hundred of them.
Two hundred, okay. And then, you know, again, you're, you're putting, you know, residents up there, so if it's just, let's call it two couples, there could be four vehicles easily, you know, in that lot. And I don't really live that far from there. My, my question really, and I don't know if you can answer this, and I guess maybe I would point this towards you, is, is the business owner present, or can we get testimony from the business owner of exactly what the customer flow of that business looks like? Because I know the layout of that building from when it was Jeremiah's. When it was Jeremiah's, she did all just pure catering. She would just, you know, people would come, pick up a bunch of stuff out the door, right? I've used her to cater. I know that is more like a restaurant, and people are in there eating, like a lot of people. So to try to, you know, shoestring it into, you know, that it's a deli, I, I, I want to say it's a stretch, and I'd, I'd love, and I think it would help with the public too, if, if the restaurant owner actually provided testimony as to how the business operates. Because I think that that's the variable here. I don't think it's a deli.
We could, we could offer Mr. Sala for testimony.
Sure.
Are there any, do you want to wrap up questions with the planner first?
I'd actually just like, any other questions for the planner at this time?
Well, let me ask a question on parking, all right? So residential site improvement standards, generally speaking, half a space per unit is for visitors and guests, and doesn't have to be assigned, right? Would it be possible or feasible, and this board is capable of granting diminished exceptions to RSIS, okay? Um, to basically only assign one parking space per apartment, and then that could leave two parking spaces for restaurant employees?
I think that's a very sound suggestion. We have done that with other developments. Um, so yes, the short answer is, we could designate one space per dwelling, which would be a total of two, still leaving two, including the handicap. But again, the handicap stall or barrier-free accessible stall would not be signed to prohibit people from parking there.
Well, actually, I was going to ask, maybe, this is a question more for Mr. Walker. If they are assigned spaces, they are no longer open to the public. I don't know if you're required to have an ADA space.
The building code says one to twenty-five stalls requires an ADA space.
All right, I stand corrected.
And just to clarify, on the RSIS, um, about year and a half ago now, they changed the parking requirements. No longer a de minimis, exception is no longer required. It is now a maximum.
So ADA, sorry, not ADA, sir, RSIS, that is correct. It is a maximum parking requirement, and for a one-bedroom unit, it's one-point-eight parking spaces per unit. And that includes point-five parking spaces for visitors, guests, which could be the on-street parking in the area, or the parking lot five hundred fifty feet away. That all complies with code.
Yes, I would agree with that.
So we could, basically, these things, these apartments could be rented with one parking space, and if somebody wants to have a second car, they've got to go make their own arrangements.
You're forgetting about the trash, by the way.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir.
I'm sorry.
So I'm just laying that out there as an alternative to allow the employees at least to park here, and then customers have to find either on-street spaces or public parking lots. Or at least two employees get accommodated.
I, um, telecommunicated with my client, uh, and he found that to be acceptable. We would assign one parking space to each residential unit if the board is so inclined to move in that direction.
I have a comment, Tom.
Michael?
This, this planning board gets involved with parking anytime we have an application in Lake Hiawatha. Now, Lake Hiawatha developed before we even had a, a master plan. Um, so North Beverly Road was, was predetermined before we started to plan development, and there's no way we can change what we have in, in, in Lake Hiawatha, unfortunately. Um, all the years I've been involved, for forty-six years, we've been talking about parking, and it would be great if we could tear down some building and build additional parking somewhere in the center of Lake Hiawatha. We've, over all the years we've been discussing it, we've never had an opportunity to do something like that, and that's our problem. And a lot of these restaurants you're mentioning, you know, they get approved with no parking because we have no choice. Um, either the, the buildings stay vacant, or we allow the owners to put something in there, and then we sit here night after night discussing parking. It's, it's not a, there's not a solution I'm aware of. And for many years, we had a, a, a committee, a business committee of Lake Hiawatha businesses. And, again, we discussed it many times with them, and no one had a viable solution to the parking in Lake Hiawatha. It's a dilemma.
Yeah, I, I hear exactly what you're saying, having lived in Bootten and done a lot of work in Bootten and been editor of the master plan. Main Street there is the same thing. Uh, but there are, you know, again, the town, and I think Parsippany also has been proactive. I mean, that lot on Minnehaha, that's thirty-one parking stalls of public parking. Um, we were hoping the fire department would be a little bit more amenable, that there's a big sign that says permit parking, but, uh, they refused us. Uh, we did approach them, uh, on a couple of occasions. Uh, but again, I think there are, where it's been possible, I compliment the municipality in creating some of these public parking areas.
That was, that was the only space available. There's no place else. You have to go up to the Lake Hiawatha library before you find another parking lot. And there's nothing in between.
And it's a, uh, you know, if you don't keep your downtowns vibrant, the case sets in, and it spreads like the plague, and then you end up with either vacant buildings or uses that may not be the most desirable uses in those spaces.
Yeah. The only, I like the building, I like the facade. I think that's a lovely improvement over what was there. Um, the residents are concerned about parking in front of their homes. Um, the only thing we could do there is maybe for a block in each direction, no parking signs on residential areas.
I don't think we can.
But you can't park there either, that's right.
Yeah.
So there's, there's no solution that I can, I can see.
Yeah, I, I will say this, that in Ridgefield Park, my office is in the downtown area, and there is, um, you do have to, uh, purchase a permit from the, the village, we're one of the few villages in the state, uh, to park on those side streets. So I think that's an option, you know, it could be designated for, you know, residential only, at least on those residential streets, but I don't think we can propose that.
No, and they would have to buy.
That's a municipal issue.
They would have to get permits to park in front of their house. That's not viable either here.
We, we had six. Later.
That was just an observation, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, the, the discussions that we had for the master plan five years ago covered this rather thoroughly.
Yeah.
And we basically said, there is no good answer, but to your point, to keep the place alive, we're going to have to allow uses that are a little bit more intense than we would like with less parking than we would like. And it's simply recognizing the truth of what's there now.
Yeah, the, the section in the master plan that talked about maybe a third floor, allowing a third story, I was totally opposed to that. That would increase the density and, and further increase the problem with parking. So no way should we ever allow that. But that's in the master plan.
And we're not, yeah, and that's not codified, but we're not proposing three stories.
No.
Well, and your ordinance does have that height requirement, that has that maxed. This, this complies with that.
Which I, which I opposed, by the way, unsuccessfully.
But that, this does comply with that requirement, so it's certainly. But that, this does comply with that requirement.
Well, I've, I've been trying unsuccessfully to, to actually limit that hybrid requirement to 35 feet from the lowest point of the foundation showing.
We've had a lot of conversations about that, too.
So-
Yeah.
But I, I noticed in your plans, it looks like you meet, you would meet that anyway.
That is correct.
So it's not, it's not absurdly high. I mean, I've seen buildings where on average, they met the requirements and it was still a 45 foot wall that I'm looking up at. That's not acceptable to me. You know, a little steep ground, but the, all right. All right, are there any other questions of this witness on the planning testimony at this time? So you're going to present, do you want to ask questions of the planning testimony at this time?
I've got about an hour and a half and there's so many things you guys are going on, I can't remember everything. So it's like really frustrating because I won't be able to address everything. And, and the parking is one thing, it's infringing on everybody in the community.
If, if, if you, so just from a procedural point of view, if you decide you want to make this a formal opposition, where you want to hire a lawyer and present to us, you can tell us you want to do that. And we can, we can put this over to a later date for your, so that you can put your, you can listen to the tapes and you can put your, your questions down if you want. But we, we can have that discussion once their case has been made.
Just, you guys have to come up to the microphone, say your name.
All right, Daniella Greenwood. I just had a question about, you, you said earlier that you don't have to meet certain variances. I don't know, I don't like, I'm not super informed on this. But that certain things were already not compliant, so they don't have to be compliant, is that correct? Okay. My question about that is, it was not compliant when it was a much smaller building. It was not very large, it was not infringing on the privacy and parking of neighbors. So now, it was already not compliant as a small building that had less traffic. So they're asking that it remains non-compliant with disregard to parking and disregard to-
These are actually turning into comments?
Neighbor parking.
I'm, I'm going to ask our attorney to address this.
So just what, make this a question.
So my question is-
Please.
How can they still request non-compliance if it's larger than already was? When it was, I don't understand how they can, my question is, how can it be non-compliant when it's already in non-compliance and it's going to be larger and infringe on-
Increasing the non-compliance?
Right, right, right.
So if you could just explain-
Like that seems not legal.
It's really more of an attorney's question.
I think I might be able to answer it.
I'll answer, but I think the-
So as far as the building's concerned, um, I believe the only pre-existing non-conformity is actually the front yard setback off of lake shore. And how Parsippany's ordinance is written, they are allowed to continue that up as long as it's conforming with the other requirements like height. So that is why they can continue that particular situation. As far as the buffer, we're, we're saying they need to comply with that and they, they are requesting a variance for it. So they were requesting a variance for the parking. They have, that's what this board's going to decide whether or not to grant those particular variances.
So, so-
But the building itself, we don't expect them to change the footprint to comply as part of this.
So there's a, there's existing conditions on the property that don't conform to the borough's requirements. And then they're also asking us to hear their case as to why they should keep those and also make additional deviations to what is required or what's permitted under the ordinance. So that's what they're asking for tonight. So they're asking for the board to actually legalize this request. That's, if that answers your question.
I have a question for our, our planner. Is there a differential in the amount of spaces if it's considered a deli versus a restaurant?
Um, I believe it's two and a half spaces.
Versus?
Right, so if it's a restaurant, the requirement I had calculated was 13 spaces. And I believe we're saying that requires 10 spaces if it's a deli.
That, no.
Three, three whole spaces.
Three whole spaces, actually. And then who determines whether it's a deli or a restaurant? Us or them, their testimony?
I think that's what we are looking for to, from the owner, to see, is this actually a deli use? We want some testimony on that. So maybe if there's no more public questions, maybe we could-
I was going to say, historically, we've relied on the zoning officer to tell us they're not really offering.
Finn's missing today. There is a definition for restaurants, there is not one for delis. So generally speaking, and we can go based on some of our other cases we've had prior and what we've considered a restaurant. So I believe not too long ago, we had a pizza place slash burrito? That we consider a restaurant, we counted, calculated it as such. So I thi- I think it comes down to the owner's testimony.
I, I would point out, the definition does specifically mention table ser- table and wait service in the definition of a restaurant. In your ordinance.
Correct.
All right, any other questions by members of the board or-
Mr. Chairman. Probably a question and or suggestion, maybe. I'm not sure if there is something, a thing like in a stackable parking exists. So what, I say usually there, and you want to do some math here. So there's 18 feet of parking space and there's 22 feet left. I don't know if you could do, you know, car after the car.
You can't, because you need that 22 feet to maneuver in and out of the spaces.
Okay. Just throwing an idea there. Because, you know, if you look at the employees of the restaurant, right? Put the car there for like six, eight hours, nobody's moving, right?
Well, well, the problem is too, if you do tandem, then you're, then the spaces need to use the street to maneuver. Not a good situation.
Right.
I, I thought he was asking about stackers, but I don't think stackers are appropriate here anyway. Because you don't want people, you know, that's, that's attended parking, it's a whole different animal. I don't even think it's permitted, that'd be another variant.
I would send you to the zoning board, then.
All right. I'm just trying, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, other, other members hearing and seeing none? The members of the public who have questions of the planning testimony at this time?
I have one, quick one.
Come on up, identify yourself and ask your question, please.
Hi, I'm Chrissy Greenwood, I live in the house behind. My question just was, how much higher is this building than the buildings that are directly adjacent to it? Because I know you spoke about how many floors there were, but from, so we're in the house behind, obviously, we're worried about privacy. From what we can see, like, we came to this board not long back to get the variance for the fence so that we wouldn't have anybody being able to look into our yard. And then this is now going to kind of take over that. So all of the businesses next to it, I was just curious how much higher this building will be than the adjacent five, six and quarters.
The Sushi Crew is a one-story building with a peaked roof. I don't think the attic is occupied. So it's not another floor. But, and I'm, without going into the definition of building height, generally, it's mean roof heights of the, of a sloped roof. Assuming that's the case, we're probably about, I would say, 12 to 15 feet higher than the mean roof height of Sushi Crew. However, we're no higher than the fire department and we're no higher than the two-story building really across the street.
The fire, I mean, there's a parking lot behind it, so I don't think that really affects on that.
Well, they're actually residences to the northwest of the fire department area.
Directly behind it.
North, I said northwest, not directly behind it. But, and a parking lot doesn't provide any screening.
Across the street from the, and, and up north a little bit.
Yes, no, I do, I do understand that. But obviously, if we're worried about it being residential as well, not just being like, obviously, the fire coming out in there all of the time, it's volunteer and it's not always munged. There's obviously going to be people in those very high up residences all of the time.
And again, I think there are some two-story residential structures in the R4 zone as well, so. People on the second floor can look over a fence or a bush. So it's not, it's not like we're proposing three stories or multi-type, in my opinion. But I'm not going to say that you can't see over the fence. Certainly not going to say that.
Definitely, definitely, yeah. All right, you.
Yep. Any other members of the public who have a question of the planning testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor, you've got another witness that you're going to-
Yes, I'd like to call Holly Sala, please.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ali Saleh. I live at Four Rochean Court in Monville, New Jersey.
And what's your relation to the applicant?
I'm the owner of the property. Good evening, everybody. Not only am I the owner of this property, I also own Kabah Paradise, which is down the street. It's a much bigger restaurant and a lot more tables than the restaurant that we're talking about right here. This location, I walked by yesterday, there's four tables inside of the restaurant right now. Two of them are four, four chairs each and the other two tables have six chairs each. As of right now, the way that they're operating, the parking lot that's in the back is used by the employees only. Majority of the customers that are coming in and out of this restaurant are parking on the street. And they're not in there for more than like, maybe 30 minutes or 40 minutes at a time. Whereas we have so many barber shops and salons on Bevick Road that maybe people going in there for multiple hours. So the street parking, even right now, where we have the road, roadwork going on on Bevick Road, we still have street parking available. I'm there all day long and we never have a problem parking. We have a, a parking lot at Kabah Paradise that we share with Howard's Bagels. And we always have parking in there and we're a very busy restaurant and so is Howard's. So I know we've, we've been talking about parking a lot here. But if we were to designate those parking spots to the residential units and how you guys proposed, maybe we do one parking spot each for the apartments, we would be okay with that as well. And maybe leave two more spots available for maybe a customer or, you know, employees. But as, excuse me, as far as the employees go, that one block or 550 feet, it's really not that bad of a walk. That's my humble opinion.
I've been informed that our zoning officer historically has enforced our rule with regard to whether it's a restaurant or not, is if it simply has seating. That's if it has seating, it's a restaurant.
Correct.
Period. No, you know, if it doesn't have seating, it can be a deli.
Correct. So it is a restaurant right now.
Good. Okay.
The, the seating that's, that's in the restaurant there, it's two, say that again, it's two tables with four?
Four seats, so that's eight and then two tables of six, six tables. Twelve.
Twenty seats.
Yep, 20 seats total.
Twenty seats.
Correct.
Can you plan on continuing just having those four tables in the future?
That's correct.
At the new restaurant?
Yeah, we have, there's no room, there's no more room for any more tables or anything in there.
So based on that testimony, the zoning officer's rule, interpretation on what a restaurant is, in regards to the calculations, it would still be that 13 required spots. The ordinance says one per three seats or one per 75 square feet of the retail space, whichever's greater. So in this case, it would be the square footage.
Okay, and our testimony previously was that the, you know, that they're requiring the spaces under, under RSIS, there would be 10, so the-
That, that was using the one space per 250 square feet if it were the deli catastrophe. So the requirement's 13 spaces. Either way, you need the variance. It's just a matter of you are deficient nine spaces now, where previously you would have been deficient six. So it's three space.
So the variance, the variance would be for nine spaces because the zoning officer interprets this use as a restaurant, not a deli. So we're not giving you the benefit of the 10 space. We're saying that you need 13 spaces. So the variance is just a little bit more intense.
Right, but again, our master plan assumed.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question of Christine. So when you calculated the residential units, you used the town requirement?
I used the town requirement.
Per unit?
Yes.
Under the residential site improvements standard, it's 1.8. So if we use the residential site improvement standards, it could be 12 parking spaces instead of 13. I was just curious why you chose to use the town requirements instead of the RSIS?
Since the RSIS has been a maximum, I have defaulted to the, the town at this point.
And I'd like to add that this is actually, and it was agreed to, that it's actually two, two-family, and that's not regulated by RSIS. And that was our point in our letter, why we asked the town code. It's not regulated by RSIS, it's two, one-family houses. So if MUL, you know, municipal land use law, RSIS would only be for three units or more.
All right, counselor?
That's a question.
The, uh, in your opinion, is most, is most of the, I mean, are the tables utilized?
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Are the tables utilized a lot? Yes, there are seats there, but the, the nature of the business is, is, is it mostly sit-down? Is it mostly take-out? Is it mostly from the counter?
The business that's there, like the restaurant, right now, it's only, it's not even been a year that it's been there since we took over Jeremiah's. It's not that busy, it's mostly take-out. One side of the restaurant is more of like ordering area where people are ordering, picking up coffee, picking up their food to go. Maybe nights and weekends, we'll have some people sitting down at the restaurant and eating. But at that point, all the hair salons, all the nail salons, they're all closed at that time. There is ample amount of parking on Bevick Road. I've been on Bevick for the last 21 years, running and operating Kabah Paradise. I grew up in Lake Hiawatha, a lot of my friends, I went to school here in town. And it's always been a, a place for people to come and eat and hang out and have a good time, go to the ice cream shop, go to the pizzerias. And with, you know, proposing that people could even park in the municipal lots, let's just say if Bevick Road is full, that would be more beneficial to the other businesses in town, especially the cafes and the dessert shops and everything that are opening up in town now. So no, the restaurant is not that busy. It's very quiet.
How many employees work on an average shift?
Three.
Substantially, we have spots for two of them and a third could park in the municipal lot or on-street.
Absolutely, absolutely. Even my guys at Kabah Paradise, when they come into work, I tell them, I'm like, park across the street at the municipal lot, leave the parking lot open for other customers. And we don't regulate who comes and parks in our parking lot. I know that everyone that shops in that area, they come and park in the Kabah Paradise parking lot and they go to different places, they'll go to the hair salon, they'll go to the nail salon. And, you know, it's a parking lot, people are going to use it. They park there for like an hour, hour and a half and then they leave, so.
Okay. Any other members of the board? Any, any questions from the public of this witness on this testimony?
I'm Drew Waszulski again. I just want to make a comment, this restaurant's awesome, love going there.
Thank you.
I think the whole discussion is about-
Sorry, you have to use the microphone. You have to use the microphone.
I think that everybody keeps talking about the restaurants. I want promote restaurants, I want to promote growth to the, to the ground. The problem is, you, you, he wants to, you want to have apartments up there. And that's where the problem is, you're putting two more [bleep] people here and the parking-
We, we really need to, we, thank you.
The question is, again, you want to do this, there's still parking problems. You put it across the town, however, there's still going to be parking on the street. And I don't think that's a solution. I'm wondering how you can even figure that out and people aren't going to go there. And I don't understand how that, that's- And I don't understand how that, that's gonna work. I love your restaurant. I love that you want to make growth, but I don't understand how you can stop the growth and have the people parking there.
As I stated before, there's always ample amount of parking on North Bevillik Road. At nighttime, especially after five or six PM, when some of the businesses, the offices, they shut down, there is much more parking there. And this restaurant is, during the day, it's not busy. The most that we're doing is take-outs. People that sit down on Friday nights and Saturday nights, Bevillik Road is completely empty, especially after five PM, for parking. And five hundred and fifty feet away, there is a municipal parking lot that other businesses will get the benefit of people parking there. It exposes their businesses, and they can try out different stuff, and so it makes the town a little bit more exposed to everybody, and everyone gets to try everything.
What are the restaurant hours?
Here, it's nine AM until nine PM.
Other members of the board have questions of this witness's testimony at this time? Mr. Stanzio?
So, you're, you're not the operator, though, of the business. You just own the building, is that correct?
Correct.
So, you, you validate that he's got three employees on each shift? So, he's running a, a full operation from breakfast, lunch, and dinner straight across?
So, it's, in the morning times, they have a, it's like more of like a cafe type of setup.
Okay.
And people are coming in and out, and then in the evening time, they have dinner.
All right, any other questions? Hearing and seeing none. I'm assuming...
I think there, I think... No, no question.
Were there any other questions from the public? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, we would also petition for residential park if they give permits for our residents that live there on one of the streets right off of Lake Shore for parking as well, if it's possible.
Sir, what?
I don't think we could do that.
The township doesn't offer residential permit parking. That would be something that would have to go to the governing body to get approved, so the planning board can't stipulate to that.
Okay.
You could go to the Township Council and ask for an ordinance change, you could, but we can't tell you to, we can't make you do that.
We would certainly be willing to do that.
Well, again, this is something we discussed in our master plan, and decided not to do it.
Yeah.
So...
I agree. My main concern is not the parking, it's the privacy. And, and of course, the logistics. It's, I, I do believe the parking is not gonna be an issue for the, for customers. It's usually pretty easy, and, and this does go according to, this does follow the plan that we hope to see with improvement on North Bevillik. I think there's ample parking. I'm a little concerned about the, the people that are gonna be in, in there if they want to. Cars are gonna have to find another place for their car. Having said that, my biggest thing is the privacy. There's no buffer back there, and I, if it were me, I would understand, and my yard was there. And I understand if there's another house, it's the same thing, so if you could do something that would really help mitigate the privacy issue there. I mean, there's lots of beautiful things I see happening in, on buildings, and the greenery makes a big difference, and it's a shade, but that's my biggest concern for the tenants, the residents. Yeah.
The back of the building is forty feet from the, from the, from, from the property line.
I, I, okay. I mean, it's hard to tell when you're looking at these. It just looks like, you know, but...
No, it's understood.
Yeah.
There was, there was testimony as far as, well, the...
Got it. I, I understand. I still think that might be... I don't know. I guess because it's a people-hitting apartment, or they don't know the people. If it's a house, you know your neighbor. It's, I don't know. It's a little different.
I thought the trellis was a good idea.
I think it is a good idea.
With climbing ivy going on.
Which we agreed to. We have no issue with that.
Yes, so I, I think that's...
If you reduce the spaces like Gordon suggested.
Solution.
And, and the trellis, you know, we would, if it wasn't made clear before as far as condition, I mean, we would work with the town, and we work with the board professionals as far as exactly what that trellis would look like.
Yes, please.
What would it, what would it be comprised of, right down to the types of plantings we use? That would certainly, our professionals would certainly work with the board's professionals as far as the design, the installation, as far as exactly what that trellis would look like and be comprised of.
Yeah, that would be good, and we could talk to the neighbors.
As you said something, clicked something in my head.
Uh huh.
So, I just took my floor plan on the second floor, and I can manipulate this little vestibule area, and I can increase the window facing to the south, facing Lake Shore Drive, as opposed to facing the residence to the east. I would still like to propose a small window on that side for ventilation.
So, less window.
But I think we certainly could do that.
And it's south, so it would nice for sun. I know.
You're an artist, you're painting.
Well, when we, when we accepted the master plan, five years ago, that was part of the discussion that there would be apartments on the second floor of restaurants, and of course, we, we threw in the third. I don't remember that third.
I don't remember the third floor. I...
I don't remember that at all.
It's written. Try to read it.
It's written there. Yeah.
I don't remember it.
I gotta go back and look. I don't remember that.
It was not codified.
No.
The council didn't approve.
Okay.
But I, I remember the second floor.
I was on the council. I remember.
The second is one thing. Third?
I said no.
Yeah, on the second floor, and, and that include, if you accept that there's going to be apartments on the second floor of a restaurant, then there's going to be some question of where the windows are gonna be. That's...
Yeah.
So, we, we accepted that there would be some...
No third floor.
So, we would stipulate the reducing the window facing east to a single, three-foot-wide window, no transom, and we would add a window on the south wall of the living room.
I was gonna say, the transom doesn't get into anybody's privacy. You know, you can keep the transom.
It's just there by more light.
Then we'll keep the transom.
You know?
That's the deal, but, no, seriously, we'll have the more of the glazing facing south, away from the residence.
Thank you, okay. I think that addresses, addresses my concern.
All right, do you have anything?
And that would be, just that, that would certainly be another design that we work with the board professionals, as far as exactly...
So, you agree to work with the board? If we approve those tonight, you'll be working with the board professionals on meeting these requirements that our attorney is working furiously to figure out how to write up?
That is correct. I, I, I've been Mr. Stanzio's chair before, so I know, I, I know how that, I'm...
Yes.
I know how challenging that is, but she knows good what she does.
Exactly.
That's, but yes, to answer your question, yes, we would work with the board for these conditions that we're talking about, and certainly work with the board professionals, as far as satisfying there and the board's requirements.
Well, it's getting close to ten. Are you ready to sum your case at this point? Is it, have you presented all of your testimony?
Yeah, I have no further questions. I'll just ask.
And you'll be allowed to respond to anything the public brings up as well?
That does conclude our affirmative case.
All right. If this, this, we're going to move right now to ask if there are comments or testimony from the public either in favor of or opposed to this application at this time. If you would like to come forward and make your comments, or testify as to why this is either good or bad, if you could come up, identify yourself, be sworn in, because we're gonna ask you questions.
Sure.
So, grab, I'm sorry, just have to grab the microphone. You can take the one, oh, okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, and please state your name, spell your last name again, and provide your address for the record.
Drew Wazaluzki, 161 Lake Shore Drive. Like I said, I had before, I'm a proud owner of, of living in Lake Hiawatha and now home there. I'm behind as well, but on the gas station side. I've got a few things, but not, just concerns. Lake Shore Drive is a very busy street. I think everybody knows Lake Shore, and also North Bevillik. You have the driveway coming in and then out of there. You have four, five, six people that are gonna be coming out of there. Before, there was a prior residence that didn't have really much movement. Now they do. I think it's awesome. Now you have a restaurant and a tenants that are gonna be up top, which is gonna be more movement, and it's right by the gas station, right by the fire department, and it's gonna cause a lot more havoc and more unsafe situations. That's my concern, especially I have, I have two children that walk my, walk dogs around the block and everything, and I want it to be a safe environment for them, and this is just gonna cause more problems, I, I believe. I want to see the, I want to see growth in this town, but I think you're trying to put too much in one area. It's already full. And you're, and they said that there's no, there's no parking in all these other places. This is a very unique situation. In front of the fire department, to the left is the gas station, to the other side is the sushi place. There is nowhere for them to go for parking. Realistically, it sounds great to be walking down five hundred feet or whatever, but that's not what's gonna happen. People are gonna pull behind us in the streets behind and start parking, and it's gonna cause, it's gonna cause friction, because there's not gonna be enough space in between, because you have cars parked on both sides of the road, and you've gotta get through. And, and, and Nicomas, on Nicomas is the street I'm talking about, right behind. The, the turn right here. You're gonna have parking on both sides, and, and there's gonna be problems. The, the garbage trucks aren't gonna be able to get down the street, and you're still gonna need to do deliveries to this place. They need space. And you, and nobody's not thinking of all the traffic that's gonna be going over there. There's gonna be a lot more traffic. And you're gonna put apartment buildings on top. That's gonna cause even more, more complications. I think it's great. Have the restaurant, deli, whatever it is, it's not that busy now, but you're gonna, now you're putting a tenant there where you're gonna add more parking, more problems, more complications. That's really what I want to address. There's garbage, it's gonna add more garbage to the back of the store. You're saying parking, parking, parking. Now you're talking about a restaurant and two tenants with garbage. Where's that garbage going? There's no room already, and that, and it's also gonna smell even more. You want us as, as people that are living there to live there. We gotta, we have to smell it. There's another restaurant over there. They have a garbage, we smell it still. The gas station, we smell it. We don't want anymore. We just don't. Dumpsters, I can't think of anything that's right now at the top of my head, but it's parking, and I understand it's parking, but it's just you're adding more complication, more friction to everybody by doing it this way. If you just leave it alone, don't have apartments on top, it's not gonna, it won't cause as much problems. And I think as a community, which we're talking about, I think we're willing to be okay with that. But you're just, it's infringing on everybody, and I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's right. That's the best I can tell right now that I can get within timeframe that I had. Thank you.
Is there other members of the public who have comments that they wish to make at this time? All right.
If you please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Diane Scannnello, S C A N N I E L L O, 37 Nicomas Avenue. I, I understand that we've addressed the parking, and that people have said that it's not a problem. As of right now, we are having a slight issue with people who do go to the restaurant, and it is a restaurant, La Plancha Restaurant. It's not a deli. That's what's written on the building. I understand there are other restaurants on North Bevillik. I appreciate the fact that we are trying to revitalize that section of town, because it has looked very dumpy, for lack of a better word, for all these years. I've lived here twenty-seven years. The building aesthetically is beautiful. I understand that. But now, I live right across the street. We do deal with at two and three o'clock in the morning, waste management coming to pick up the dumpster. Now, we have a huge truck that pulls into that driveway. It pulls straight in. Now, if you put the parking spots straight in, how is that truck going to maneuver to get that dumpster where you're situating it up against the back of the building? We also have the grease management, which comes to pick up the grease from the restaurant. They have a truck that comes in sometimes three, four o'clock in the morning. How are they gonna maneuver coming in if you have residential parking behind there? Now, even if you decided that you were only gonna put one spot in there for each tenant, where's that other tenant, if they have a second car, gonna park? They're not going to go to the, the lot by Minihana, especially if they've got groceries, they're coming home from work. They're gonna want to park on Nicomas, which is where we live. As it is right now, we all, I realize it's a public street, but we've all been there for so long that everyone pretty much knows where they're parking on their street. There's families that have children that have grown up. Now they've got three or four cars to a household. They might have a car driveway that maybe fits two cars. Now you've got all these cars lined up on Nicomas Avenue, both sides of Lake Shore. I'm getting nervous. I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
So, this is our, our, our problem, is that if, say, you have these apartments, they have a party. Where are we gonna park if we come home? If we go out for the day? We come home, we have no place to park. What are we supposed to do in this situation? The restaurant maybe isn't as busy as Jeremiah's used to be. Jeremiah's used to have parties. They used to have showers. They used to have craft parties and whatever. That back space used to be loaded, and the overflow would go onto our street. So, these are concerns that we have. I mean, as residents that have lived here for a long time, I don't begrudge you trying to have a, a, a new restaurant, having to make things look better, but it's not beneficial to us in some respects. So, that's where our main concern is. I mean, it's easy to say, you know, well, they have parking in the lot here, but realistically, I go to the salon on North Bevillik. I hear from the beauticians and whatever, how they have to park over here where their customers can't find spots on North Bevillik during the day. There's, I mean, other places that people can park. It's just, it's just crazy. But, I mean, that's all I have to say. I just, I just think it's not beneficial to us. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
If you please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And then just state your name, spell your last name, and give your address for the record.
Okay, Nala Greenwood, G R E E.
You just speak up.
The microphone.
G R E E N W O O D, 172 Lake Shore Drive, Hiawatha. Right. Just want to say thank you for listening to us and hearing our concerns, and like, trying to work with everyone. Like, I understand what you're trying to do. Everyone loves your restaurant. Like, I, we don't like hold any ill will. I do have like some, obviously, like, concerns considering we're like right behind it. I'm a little concerned just like safety-wise, just because like in that intersection, like, I... I know like when I come home, like there's the buses, and like it just, it does get very crowded over there, so I'm a little concerned safety wise, and like I understand, like, it's a public street, things are going to happen. With the parking, like, parking is always going to be an issue. However, just with the inflow of traffic and with the buses that we have stopped there and all the other trucks, I'm just concerned on how congested that's going to be in terms of like, I think you already mentioned, like, it seems like there's accidents there all the time. And I appreciate like Ms. Hernandez saying about the privacy concerns, like it does like directly overlook our, like private spaces, right? Like I understand it's a public lot, but like we, we came here to ask for like a bigger fence because we didn't like how open it was, and you granted it, thank you. And now it's like, I understand you're saying there's other buildings, but we are the only, there's three backyards there that directly would overlook that area, and it looks in it, and if there's, if it doesn't get improved, that there's some sort of way that it could please respect, just like the people who have been there and who have lived there for a long time, it would be appreciated, but those are just the only things I just wanted to highlight, please, like the safety and like the privacy of like the residents who have lived there. It seems like just of a concern. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Counselor, do you have any response or questions?
Actually, actually, I do have a few responses, and I may, I may have some questions to call on my witnesses. The first comment, I would say, as far as, as far as the unsafe comments, I understand safety on properties, I understand whether they be commercial, residential, and I appreciate, and I appreciate the concerns about those. And the unsafe environment appears to be caused by the additional cars that will be parked on the, on the site. But we're talking about the addition of two one-bedroom apartments. We're talking about a maximum traffic being added by those of four cars. And you could certainly make an argument for a one-bedroom, it's possibly that it might even be only one car for apartment. So, the concern about the additional traffic, if we're talking about four cars, it's not a significant increase in traffic. I'm not a traffic expert, I don't intend to represent as one, but it's certainly not an intense traffic situation, and to the point that one of the members of the public, and I thought it was a good one that they made about Jeremiah's. Jeremiah's was a catering hall, where there were a lot of people there at one time. They were, they, they had parties, they had gatherings, there were large gatherings, and even, there were even gatherings, say after school, or during afternoons at that time. That point, that point is well made about that. This is not a catering hall. This is, this is a restaurant that my client had testified that has, that would have a maximum of 20 seats. The business right now, and will likely continue that way, is that it's mostly going to be carryout, it's mostly going to be takeout. And there are tables there, and I understand, I understand that the parking requirements are based upon the, are based upon the number of seats. Your zoning office, your zoning officer has, has made that, that call. I wish the zoning officer were here to hear the testimony about the use of the restaurant here, is that, and I think, I think the call, as far as that is just blanket restaurant, I think that disregards the testimony that was provided this evening. Nonetheless, it's a much less intense use than it was Jeremiah's. And I would even offer, my office used to be in Monville back in the day, and I would go to Jeremiah's when it wasn't a catering hall, and I would pick up, pick up a sandwich and go back to the office. In my experience, I always parked on North Beverlywick, and I never had a problem. And this was during, this was during lunchtime. The, the, and to Ms. Winter's point, another good point, is that it's deemed that if the parking lot is within 1,000 feet, then it's walkable. The parking lot on the corner of Minihaha and, and, and North Beverlywick is, as I said, 550 feet. It's one block. Granted, it's a long block, but it is one block. And for the other businesses, there was a public, one member of the public, the woman just said that there were, there were complaints about other businesses as far as, as far as, as far as lack of parking. Well, businesses to the north of us are even closer to the public parking lot, and the complaint by the member of the public was that there was no parking on North Beverlywick. If there is no parking by that use, which is not our use, it's not in front of us, well those businesses, the salon, the barber shop, they're closer to the municipal parking lot, much less than 550 feet. So there's, there's, that parking lot, that parking lot can serve all of those businesses. And Mr. Garrett had testified that he went to the, went to the lot today, noticed that there were 31 parking spaces, and that 14 were being used, and I think, including a few school buses on there. So I think the testimony, I think the testimony is clear that there's, there's parking available on the street, there's also parking 550 feet away at the municipal, at the municipal parking lot. And the concern about the public is that there's going to be additional traffic because of the apartments. It's a maximum of four cars, and they're residents. Maybe they go to work in the morning once, and maybe they come back once during the week. Yes, they'll probably run errands on the weekends, just like, just like we all do. But that traffic load does not compare to what was at Jeremiah's, or what was the catering hall previously. It's, it's a, it's a less intense use. Now regarding to the privacy, and Ms. Hernandez, it's a very good point. It's just that we're, we're, yes, we're adding height to the building, and neighbors would be concerned about that. We recognize that, and we're going to reduce the windows in the back to one window, and we're going to add the trellis. We, we agree to that, we agree to that. And probably just as important is that what the board seeks, or the board's professionals seek for those conditions, we'll work with the board together, and I know I'm repeating myself, but we will work with the board to, to, to satisfy those conditions to the satisfaction of the, of the board professionals. And Mr. Chairman, you made, you made the point about the master plan, and I thought, I thought it was, I thought it was instructive as far as, in the master plan seeking some additional uses or something maybe a little bit different on to, on, on North, on North Beverlywick Road. Whatever those new uses are, and we've seen it tonight, it always comes back to the parking, it always comes back to the parking. But, but a use like this, where we're adding on two one-bedrooms, is really almost as less intense than you possibly could, as far as changing an existing building. And the apartments are a conditional use, we comply with all of the conditions. It's, it's mu, it's a much less intense use and for, and everyone, and everyone said they, they really appreciate it, they really, they think it's a beautiful building. It really is. It's a, it's, you look at it, and it's, and it's striking. I think for North Beverlywick Road, for Lake Hiawatha, to have one of these buildings like this, aesthetically, aesthetically pleasing building, then that's, that's where, that's where the benefits outweigh the detriment for this application, because it's a less intense use with the, with the, with having one bedroom, one bedroom apartments, two one-bedroom apartments. We're not changing the footprint of the building except for the 27 square foot, square foot bump out. The height, the height is compliant. If, if it's, if the township in its master plan, and the board working and approving the master plan, seeks to have a different use or something, or something maybe a little bit extra, if you will, on North Beverlywick Road, this is really the ideal application. This is where you add on two apartments, two, only two one-bedroom apartments. We've also agreed to, where we were talking about two spaces for each resident, and we'll go to one if you wish. That's, so we're, we're, we, we think this is the type of application, Mr. Chairman, that the, that you were discussing, that you've been discussing over the years, that the, the town is looking for after reexamining its, its master, its master plan five years ago. Again, I stress, for all the conditions that we've agreed to, we're certainly working with the board professionals to make the work. We appreciate the public's comments as far as privacy and security, we think we've addressed those, and those, those are my comments.
All right.
Is that 30 more seconds, Chair? Is there enough, one more time, sir?
I mean, this is.
On 30 seconds, I'll be done.
It's up to you, Chairman. It's unconventional. It'll be up to you.
I'm just referring back to what you were saying, which is not fully true.
Please tell us what you think.
Again, Drew Wazaluzki, 161 Lake Shore. Jeremiah's was only on occasion. This is going to be every day, this, this business and this situation, it's going to be an everyday situation. Last, is not only those tenants, it's not just them, they have families as well, they're going to need to park if they do, usually that's what happens. And they're not in, they're minimizing it, but there's going to be other people as well, and we're not thinking about that as well. And that's got to go somewhere too. So I just want to say, because Jeremiah's did have it, but it was on occasion, once a month. This is going to be every day. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I appreciate you guys for listening.
I'll add one more comment, Mr. Chairman.
And it'll be brief.
The restaurant use is a permitted use in the zone. All the discussion as far as the garbage pickup, as far as they can likely move the dumpster close at the back of the building closer to the edge, so the truck wouldn't barely even have to go into the, into the driveway. If it had to go in the driveway, then yes. We've also, we've also asked for the variance for a six-foot fence, because we thought a six-foot fence would adequately screen the enclosure. And I can't stress enough, the restaurant use is a permitted use. As far as the garbage pickup, as far as the grease pickup, it's like those are all normal events that have to do with a permitted use, the restaurant use.
Would, would the applicant be open to making sure that the grease and the garbage pickup are during normal business hours, because there was some testimony that they're late at night?
Yeah.
Could that, would you agree to do that?
I mean, from my understanding, I've been doing this for over 20 years, it's usually after 7:00 AM and before 5:00 PM. It's never during the middle of the night.
Okay, well, just, well, that's okay, okay?
Yeah, we would agree. I'm just saying that because I have the microphone.
Okay. And that's your case?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
The public has spoken. Mr. Canziano?
Yeah, I just have two housekeeping items I wanted to bring up. Is one of the trellis that's being quote around. The front yard setback is 10 feet off of Lake Shore, and you have a maximum height of four-foot height for a fence or wall in the front yard. We're not asking for any relief at this time, so it's for the board if they want the fence to be six-foot high.
Then at 10 feet, it'd be best to ask for it now.
Yeah. And then the other, the other comment, again, just the board, Mr. Metz floated the idea of a couple of parking spaces to be used for non-residential purposes. I just ask that that gets discussed and resolved. So, when it goes to resolution and the professionals got to review it, we know it was approved. Thank you.
Good points.
Points we'll make, yes.
All right.
So we, we would need to know what the trellis height and the setback would be? Is that what you're saying?
The trellis height, I would recommend that it be six-foot in the front yard setback, so that you could have a consistent six-foot height trellis along that property line, and not have to have it staggered at four-foot height for the first 10 feet, and then bump up to six-foot. I would, I would suggest it be a six-foot high trellis for the length.
That is acceptable, we would agree to that?
And the board would have to grant relief on that.
That would be an additional factor.
How high, how high is the residential fence? And we're going to have a trellis smaller than that? That doesn't make any sense.
Right, yeah.
The trellis should be 10 feet or 12 feet. Otherwise, it's not blocking anything.
He's right.
Yeah.
That has to be that.
So we need, they need a variance for a.
They'll need a variance for.
A 10-foot trellis.
Over, over, something over six feet. Right, right. Because the first 10 feet were within the front yard, so that would only be permitted at four feet, and past that would be permitted at six feet.
Okay, so we could say asking for a variance for the trellis for anything over four feet in height? And they're going to be working with the board professionals to make sure that that's an appropriate height?
I don't think the 10 feet within the front yard setback is really going to make a whole lot of difference.
12.
No, no, not.
The setback.
Start with a trellis 10 feet back from the front property line, and then we'll build a higher trellis. I don't think there's any, I don't think there's a benefit, in fact, I don't know that I really want a 12-foot element in that front yard, so I think it should start at the front yard setback.
It's only in that back corner.
It's on Lake Shore.
It's on Lake Shore, on Lake Shore side.
Because it's a corner lot, it's considered a.
Oh, 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 but what they're concerned is their back.
I would strongly suggest we start at the front yard setback and go back. That's a setback.
I agree.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
You got that in there?
Oh, 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 oh.
Yes.
They were in a conflict. I'm suggesting we start the trellis 10 feet back on Lake Shore Drive, so we honor the front yard setback on Lake Shore Drive and eliminate that variance. I don't think there's a real benefit to going way up to the property line, and I don't even think it's an idea.
No, it would be a psych distance.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I would start at.
Yeah, okay. They're talking about setback, not height.
And I would think 10-foot is probably structurally an appropriate height, and it will also get growth above that fence, the existing fence.
Yeah, but their fences.
Their fences, six feet, eight feet, eight feet.
Their fences, eight feet.
But they came to Board of Adjustments for that.
You're only gaining two feet.
Their property's lower.
Oh, okay.
That's true.
I guess I should have pointed out.
Yeah, I.
Maybe eight feet on the other side.
Yeah, I think it's a portion of maybe eight feet, but I think it's a portion of six-foot too, based on the comments. It doesn't matter, we'll be higher than the fence, like you.
I can tell you their exact approval.
What?
I can tell you their exact approval. Six-foot high fence, five-foot solid, and one-foot lattice, and a seven-foot high solid fence. Their, their property, it was on a grade, so they got multiple heights.
And that's what it looks like in the photograph, too. We need three feet higher.
So we're saying what, 10-foot fence?
10-foot trellis.
10-foot trellis.
I'm a little concerned about 12 feet, just from a structural.
Okay. Okay.
With the wind we've been having?
Yeah, exactly.
You'll need relief for anything over six.
Understood.
Well, if it's a lattice trellis.
Oh, my God.
That plants would grow through, you would have some airflow.
You would, but the vertical struts are going to be a problem.
Okay.
Again, I'm expecting more like a wood or a wood-like composite trellis. I don't want to start putting steel in there, anybody's going to want steel.
Right.
No, they have a white fence.
Okay, fair enough. All right. So, this finishes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing.
It does, yes. And again, that's, that, we would include that, the 10-foot requirements, as far as we could add that, that we would require that for the variance, variance ends.
All right. So, I'm going to ask for the sense of the board. Do we want to move to a resolution? Do we want to have a conference? Do we want to have a conference and discuss this? What's, what's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, may we comment on what we've heard?
Absolutely.
May I? Coming up North Beverwick Road, this would be a great improvement, but, and there's always a but, two additional apartments is going to exacerbate the parking situation. Expecting people to park 500 feet away in the middle of the winter, especially seniors, they're not gonna come to this restaurant, they're gonna go to one even closer to the parking area. I cannot support this application. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mealy, any other comments? Is there a resolution that somebody would like to make at this point in time?
So, many go over that condition?
If we can go over the conditions before, before we have the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, the parking would be, the parking would be four weeks.
I know.
Okay, I just wanted to-
So, the parking is, the parking is the parking in terms of the potential customers? That's not gonna change at all?
Agreed.
Okay, so, my notes show that these were the conditions that were discussed and agreed upon, that the applicant would comply with the engineer's recommendations to repair and extend the sidewalk along both frontages. To comply with the board engineer and board planners' recommendations as discussed tonight. To decrease the width of the parking spaces to, was it eight and a half feet?
Yes.
Width. So, then, an additional, the trellis could be added along the parking area to, as a The residential window in Unit A would be reduced facing east and then would be increased facing Lake Shore Drive, and interior blinds would be installed. The trellis would be added with plantings that grow vertically, and the trellis would be 10 feet high. The applicant would coordinate to relocate the entry door to the restaurant and would install one street tree on Lake Shore Drive in coordination with the township. That the applicant would agree to assign two spaces for residents in the parking area and then leave the other two unassigned or for-
Employees.
Employees. And then-
Should you reward that to say, one parking space per apartment?
Yes.
Yes.
The applicant is willing to go to the township council to request additional residential parking permits for residents. Applicant will work with the township and board professionals for the trellis design and landscaping. I discussed the window. The applicant will agree to ensure that grease and garbage pickup occur during normal business hours, and a variance would be required for the trellis height over six feet. So, I think that was everything.
One clarification, yeah. So, two parking spots will be assigned to two units, one each.
One each, yep.
So, what happened to the other two? Are they open to general public or they are assigned to employees?
I think that's what-
Assigned to employees.
It was employee parking.
Employee parking, okay.
And that's basically the way it was working already.
Yep. Okay.
Correct. Based on Mr. Sal's testimony, yes.
So, even if you had a handicapped person trying to find a space, they wouldn't, there wasn't gonna be one there now anyway.
Right, okay.
So, all right, with all of those conditions, is there somebody willing to make a motion? Mr. Chairman?
Mr. DeDich.
Mr. DeDich was not here for the first witness.
Okay, so then, we turn to this side.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application number 24,504, FC Real Estate Group LLC, 44 North Beverwick Road, Block 531, Lot 11, Zone B5, preliminary and final site, major site plan with C variance for construction of two second-story apartment units over a restaurant with all the conditions laid out by our attorney.
Second.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dee Piero.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Mealy.
No.
Meth.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Stanziel.
Yes.
Dingmore.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The motion is passed, and is there anything else that needs to come before the-
No, but I'm thinking, you know, that this has happened, and then when you're just in North Beverwick Road, certification project, I know they're just doing the roads now, but this is gonna come up more, and, you know, I'm gonna find out if the township and the traffic committee can look at some of these areas when they do the completes, do the streets, maybe the lining, the lines need to be made so it's easier for people to drive across without-
Absolutely.
If this all is just happening.
Well, this is-
I feel for these people, you know, but it is zone for that, and that's what we wanna do.
That's what the master plan said we were gonna do.
Yeah, and it's too important.
Yep, two one-bedroom apartments.
Yeah.
All righty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, it's exhausting.
Did you used to be a precipitating policeman? No?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Oh, motion, motion.
Okay, just, all right, I got a motion to adjourn, is there anybody opposed?